Meeting will please come to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Willmet. I now ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
Trustee Barrow.
Here.
Trustee Dodd.
Here.
Trustee Kersman.
Here.
Trustee Kennedy.
Here.
Trustee Plunkett.
Here.
President Balinski.
Here. We're all here, so we obviously have a quorum. This meeting is being conducted remotely via Microsoft Teams software, and I'll now ask Peter Skiles, our Director of Administrative Services, to explain some logistics to the members of the public joining us tonight.
Thank you, President Balinski. So, everybody will have begun the meeting tonight muted, and when President Balinski calls for public comments, those joining us with the Teams client can toggle their mute status by clicking on the microphone icon on the meeting toolbar. I just want to point out that depending on what device you're connecting to the meeting with tonight, there has been some updates recently to the Teams client. So, the meeting toolbar, if you've joined us before, it may not be where you're used to seeing it. It could be stuck at the top of your screen or down towards the bottom center of your screen. So, you may have to hunt a little bit for that microphone icon, but you can use that to toggle your mute status. And those joining us by audio conference dial-in can toggle their mute status by pressing star six. And only attendees can unmute themselves. Nobody is able to unmute another attendee. And as, just as a reminder, that public comment can also be provided on the Village's YouTube livestream or by emailing publiccomment@willmet.com, just in case you have technical difficulties tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skiles. For those watching this video in the future, the state of Illinois is currently under a gubernatorial disaster proclamation, which was issued by Governor Pritzker due to the coronavirus global pandemic. As a result, all in-person village governmental meetings have been canceled. However, the state also amended the Open Meeting Act to permit electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the Village Board during a gubernatorial disaster proclamation. So, we are conducting our business tonight in compliance with the new provisions of state law. As usual, this meeting is being broadcast live on our local access cable channel six and on the internet on YouTube, and I'll give you the URL for that. One more time, www.youtube.com/user/villageofwillmet/live. Sorry. A recording of the meeting will be archived on the Village's YouTube website, as we do with all of our other televised meetings. And a remote meeting obviously requires a different mechanic for public participation. So, to ensure that our residents, business owners, and other interested parties have the opportunity to participate in this meeting, excuse me, I've got a horse throat right now, we have solicited a public comment prior to the start of the meeting via email. So, if you send an email to publiccomment@willmet.com prior to the start of the meeting, your email has been provided to the board members, and it will be included in the minutes of the meeting, but it will not be read during the meeting. Members of the public who are watching the broadcast can participate during our designated public comment periods by submitting comments through the YouTube Live chat feature. A member of the village staff will read your comment to the Village Board. Now, for those of you who have connected to the meeting via Microsoft Teams or via the telephone at the appropriate time, I will ask people to speak up if they'd like to make a public comment. Because of the logistical difficulties of not being together in person, I'll first ask people to just identify themselves as someone who would like to address the board. I will assemble a list, and then I'll call on individuals, person by person, for their turn to speak. For people speaking during public comment, they will be allotted three minutes to address the board, just as they are during an in-person meeting. All comments received from the public, regardless of how they are received, will be recorded into the minutes, as we typically do. And again, I will remind people to keep their connections on mute until they're ready to speak, and actually, I'm going to mute everyone right now. So, trustees, if you were off mute, apologize, but you are now on mute. Boy, it's gonna be a long meeting if my throat doesn't improve. Before each meeting, the Board receives a packet of agenda materials. These materials are also posted on willmet.com on the Friday before our meeting, so that residents and other interested parties can review the very same materials that the board members receive. This week's packet contained 454 pages. Now, we have a very full agenda tonight, and we'll get to item six, which is the Standing Committee reports. I'm going to advance item 6.21 first, which is the presentation of the fiscal year 2021 proposed budget. After we go through item 6.21, we'll move to item 6.31, Presentation of the Administration Committee's Recommendations Regarding Boards and Commissions, and then we will move back to the Land Use Committee items, item 6.11 and 6.12. I need one second here. I'm gonna try and cure my voice problem. Okay. Next item on the agenda is item two, Public Comment. At an in-person meeting during the Public Comment section of the meeting, individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address the Board on an item which is not on the agenda tonight. However, as I said, this meeting is being conducted remotely. Public comments, which were submitted by email in advance of the meeting, are provided to the board members and are part of the public record, but those comments will not be read during the meeting. I'll now ask people who are watching on YouTube Live to submit comments for the staff to read. You can find the chat window to the right of the YouTube Live video window. And while they are typing, I'll ask if there are any individuals who have connected to the meeting via Teams or via the telephone who would like to address themselves. I'd ask those people to identify themselves now, and I will create a list, and then we will go back to people and give them their three minutes. So, is there anyone who'd like to be heard?
Good evening, Mr. President. Adam Augustinsky of 1215 Cleveland Street.
Mr. Augustinsky, you're on the list. You are the list right now.
I am the list, thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard on an item which is not on the agenda tonight? All right, hearing none. Mr. Augustinsky, you have three minutes to address the Board.
Good evening, Mr. President and trustees. I want to follow up. I appeared before you several meetings ago, and I only have three minutes. I want to ask you, please, to, at the end, however you work on this, for you to make a decision on the issues of the light show, and I would ask, please, that you give me and my neighbors at least as much time as you so kindly gave the batting cage, which affects one five-hundredth of the people, and which, and you made some wise and reasoned decisions. Seven o'clock, you used your regulations. So, the only thing I'm asking from you is, of course, you can go to staff and talk to them, but please, get, give me an hour and the neighbors an hour or two. I'm not asking for new ordinances. What I'm asking is, very quickly, I'll read, and I'll follow up in writing, Section 16.91, Excessive and Unnecessary Noise, 20.91, Obstructing Streets, 20.96, Obstructions at Intersections, 20.246, Wireless Communications, 30-13.3, Exterior Lighting, 30-13.4, Unusual Recreation Equipment, 30-13.6, Temporary Use Structures, 30-13.7, Environmental Performance Standards, Noise, Glare, and Air Pollution. These are just some of the parts of the current code. I'm simply asking for honest enforcement and knowing that this, this is not a problem between neighbors. I received the letter, actually, I read late last night, I received it last night, claiming that I should go mediate. I, I have a problem, and my neighbors have a problem with the show and with the public safety and with COVID. I don't, I am not deputized by our village to take action on behalf of the village. The village has insurance, the village has responsibilities, the taxpayers, like me and everybody else, and all I'm asking is for fair enforcement. If you guys know, and I'm so sorry to characterize it, but I believe honestly, that a circus, that an entertainment venue is coming into our town for approximately six weeks, where in the last two years before COVID, there are buses of folks with big margarita drinks on public, these buses are the commercial buses coming in, and COVID has come, you know, is now among us, and, and the streets and the public safety vehicles can't get through. In the last couple of years, there's been a market change. It's been publicized, if you guys take a look, to hundreds of people on social media, for example, and I'm asking, I'm not asking, this is not a problem with somebody on private property putting in lights. The problem is what it draws, and the hundreds of vehicles, they wouldn't be accepted in our village with, with the restaurants and anything else. They shouldn't be accepted in our small park by Harper School. This has nothing to do with neighbors. This has to do with fair and honest enforcement of regulations. You know, I'm a religious person, and I am not asking you on any religious basis. I'm not trying to shut down anybody's views, except if they violate the light standards, if they violate the obstruction standards, if nobody is watching and people are running around, literally, children in the streets, people honestly with, who are drunk, we've talked before about the, the people engaged in personal activity in limos, you know this is coming again. It's gonna get worse because people have been cooped up. I ask you for honest enforcement and to make sure to talk with the neighbors. I, I never got a call, never got anything from any of the nice staff members. I'm sure they're busy. As far as I know, none of my neighbors did either, and staff doesn't make decisions. Like, you go, Adam, and mediate a public issue with other people. You are our leaders. You are, should make the decision. You know the circus is coming, and the problem is it's uncontrolled and it's unregulated. And we're not asking you to shut down a Christmas display. We're asking you to, to look at your current regulations, our regulations that we all have to live with, and to say, no more of hundreds of people in the fumes and the exhaustion, and people from all over the city in our metropolitan area coming in and now mixing. You know, this, this is kind of a prophylactic request as well, because it's gonna be a lot worse this year. And also, please, madam and, and the trustees of our village, consider that you made a decision a few weeks ago, that seven o'clock's a good time to stop bothering the neighbors, not 10 o'clock, not nine o'clock, and seven o'clock, four to seven, something like that, that might work, that might be fine, and it wouldn't interfere with anybody's lights if the lights were not brighter. And by the way, there's a sound system that's put up there, and that, that should be looked at. This never happens. There's a collection of money that was done last week. That's something, there's a box that's built and...
Mr. Augustinsky, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you off. I've offered, I've given you five minutes already, so...
Mr. President, I bet you have. That's, I appreciate earnestly your time. I ask, please, to give me as much time and my neighbors before you guys make the decisions as you did the batting cage and the restaurants where you made good decisions. Thank you for the extra time, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Augustinsky. I would note that I do believe the staff did send you a letter.
I did. I was unresponsive completely in my mind, Mr. President. I got it last night. I referred to, thank you very kindly.
Okay. All right. So, that was the only person who had identified themselves via Teams. Are there any individuals who submitted comments via YouTube Live chat?
There are no comments, President Balinski.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll move on to item three, which is the Consent Agenda. As described on the agenda, items which are routine business that are not normally debated by the Village Board are placed on the Consent Agenda. All items beginning with the number three are on the Consent Agenda. So, tonight, that means that items 3.1 through items, item 3.16 are on the Consent Agenda. Items on the Consent Agenda are up for approval tonight, and items not removed by a member of the audience is not removed by one of the trustees. The item will be approved and will not be discussed. So, I'll begin by asking if there's any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the Consent Agenda. People who are watching on YouTube Live should now submit their requests. So, are there any individuals who have connected to the meeting via Teams or via the telephone who would like to remove an item from the Consent Agenda? I'll now ask people to identify themselves. Okay, hearing none. Are there any requests from people via YouTube Live?
No requests, President Balinski.
Okay. Are there any items that any of the trustees would like to remove from the Consent Agenda? Okay, hearing none, may I have a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
I believe that was trustee Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
I think trustee Barrow beat you there, trustee Dodd by just a bit. So, it's been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda?
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Barrow.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Kersman.
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett.
Aye.
President Balinski.
Aye. So, the motion carries the Consent Agenda has been adopted. If you were here for an item on the Consent Agenda, it was just approved. There will be no further discussion of those items or any of the other items on the Consent Agenda, so you are free to log off or hang up. But of course, you're more than welcome to stay and watch the rest of the meeting. Next item on the agenda is item 4.1, Proclamation Designated October 2020 as National Domestic Awareness Month, and I will read that proclamation. Whereas domestic violence impacts women, men, and children of every age, background, and belief, and whereas nearly one in four women and one in seven men in the United States have suffered physical violence by an intimate partner, depriving them of their autonomy, liberty, and security, and face continuing threats to their health and safety, and whereas during National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we reaffirm our dedication to forging an America where no one suffers the hurt and hardship that domestic violence causes, and we recommit to doing everything in our power to uphold the basic human right to be free from violence and abuse. Now, therefore, I, Robert T. Balinski, President of the Village of Willmet, Cook County, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the Village of Willmet's recognition of the month of October 2020 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I call on all persons to speak out against domestic violence and support local efforts to assist victims of these crimes in finding the help and healing they need. I will move on to a report from our village manager, Mr. Bremen.
No report, Mr. President.
Next report is from our Corporation Council, Mr. Stein.
No report, Mr. President.
Next item on the agenda is item five, the Liquor, Report of the Liquor Control Commissioner. There's no report tonight. So, we'll move on to our Standing Committee reports, and as I said at the beginning of the meeting, I am advancing item 6.21 under the Finance Committee report. So, trustee Kennedy, I'll recognize you to introduce item 6.21.
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to be hearing from Mr. Bremen, who's going to give us a preview of the proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year. So, I cede the floor to Mr. Bremen.
And before Mr. Bremen, let me just make one quick comment. Thank you, trustee Kennedy. This is the first step in the formal process in our regular Village Board meetings to create and approve the fiscal year 2021 budget. So, the staff's gonna present the proposed budget this evening to the Board and the community. Board members will have an opportunity to review the budget and ask questions of the staff individually and at our Budget Committee, the whole meeting on October 28th, as well as future meetings. So, no action tonight. This is just the process. And so, Mr. Bremen, I will now turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. I assume everyone can see the PowerPoint slide? Okay. All right. So, first of all, I would just like to thank and acknowledge the staff who've worked so hard on this document, the budget team consisting of Melinda, Eric, Lynn, Alex, as well as our department heads and assistant department heads and their staff. This is a Herculean effort, and having been in Eric and Alex's positions here in the past, I certainly can appreciate how much work goes into this, the level of detail that's required, and the stress that comes with getting this done, getting it done right, and getting it done on time and thoughtfully. So, I wanted to thank and acknowledge all the staff. The budget itself is 472 pages. It was provided to the Village Board just before this meeting in your GoodReader app. It's also on our website. We'll be providing hard copies to the Board later this week. In a typical year, you would have had a hard copy at your seat at the dais, but since we're not in person, we will deliver those to your home. Given how long the budget, budget document is, it can be a little overwhelming. I would encourage board members, members of the village staff, and members of the community to start by reading the manager's transmittal letter. It's intended to give a very high-level summary of the budget and to tell an important story about where we're at financially, the challenges we face over the next several years, and how we plan to tackle those challenges. And I'd also encourage board members over the next two weeks prior to our budget workshop to please reach out to staff. We can schedule a time to walk everyone through the budget and answer any questions you may have. So, with that, I'm gonna jump into the presentation. This is a very high-level presentation. The detailed discussion will happen at our budget workshop meeting on October 28th. So, in terms of highlights of the budget document, first, and most importantly, this document maintains all village services. It also works to minimize the impact of our budget on our taxpayers, residents and business owners alike. When we had met as a Board back in October for our mid-year financial review, we were looking at a projected tax levy increase of 4.11%. We've been able to reduce that down to 3.97%, and our next slide will provide a little bit more detail on that. The average stormwater utility fee is increasing by approximately $31 for the year. That is, is intended to pay off the debt service associated with the Neighborhood Storage Improvement Project as we proceed into Phase Two next year. There will be no other fee or tax increases whatsoever as part of the proposed budget. The Board may recall that we had previously discussed a possible 4% sewer rate increase, as well as a 2.5% refuse collection fee increase. As we've dug into the numbers more, we do not believe either increase is necessary, and we want to hold the line as best we can, especially given the economic situation we all face right now. And the budget continues our significant commitment and investment in our infrastructure. We fully fund the Infrastructure Investment Program. That's what we used to refer to as our engineering or our dedicated engineering program to meet the Village Board's goals. We'll be funding our, the completion of our Central Avenue Downtown Reconstruction Streetscape project, Phase Two of Skokie Lake, our full road program, full alley program, Brick Street renovation, sidewalks, traffic calming, bike and pedestrian improvements. We also have more than $21 million for really critical sewer improvements, including Phase Two of Neighborhood Storage at Hibbert Park, and more than $400,000 invested in our water In terms of the tax levy, this is a side-by-side comparison from last year to this year. And what we try to focus on is the general operations portion of the levy, because that's the portion that we really can control. We cannot control the pension levy. That's dictated in terms of the benefits we have to pay by the General Assembly in Springfield, and debt services based on previously issued debt for important capital projects. So, we're under 4%, and, you know, we're mitigating a significant portion of the levy increase by transferring a half a million dollars from the General Fund Reserve to our public safety pensions as we continue transitioning into our 15-year amortization schedule. This will be year two of four of our transition. Of the 3.97% increase, that's the average impact of the property tax bill of approximately When we met as a committee of the whole in August to talk about our mid-year financial review, we talked about our methodology for the 21 budget, and this is certainly a different budget than we've had in the past, and a different approach than we've had in the past, given the COVID-19 pandemic and the uncertainty that comes with that. Now, in most normal years, we have a pretty good level of certainty of how our revenues are gonna shake out in the, in the following budget year. This year, we just don't have that clarity, and what we want to really do is minimize the impact of our budget to our taxpayers, to service levels, and to the organization as much as we can. We had talked previously about identifying a multi-step contingency plan to be flexible and respond to the economic conditions as they appear, and we're gonna continue our regular, regular financial reviews with the Village Board so that we can make decisions in a timely manner. This is the 11th budget I've worked on in Willmet, and I never imagined or envisioned my first budget as a village manager having a nearly $2 million deficit in the general fund. However, I really do believe that is the best approach for the community and for the organization right now, as we try to get a better handle on what COVID really means to our revenues moving forward. Now, we are in a very strong financial position, and we're fortunate to have the flexibility to budget this type of deficit, knowing we're still gonna be in a good position at the end of '21. So, as part of this, we are, we had already planned the spend drawdown for pensions and our comprehensive plan rewrite, which the Plan Commission met just the other week to begin reviewing a draft RFP. The COVID-19 revenue impacts are the most significant portion of this 1.9 million, and we do have a very small structural operating deficit. That's discussed in greater detail in the budget transmittal letter. It's something we'll talk about in more detail at our budget workshop on the 28th. As I stated, you know, we still project reserves to exceed our 30% target and not factor it into any of our budget analysis or projections, because this is the conservative approach we've taken historically. We are not budgeting for any non-recurring revenues, even though it is very likely that we'll have two large permits based on land use approvals that the Village Board has granted in the past year. At our mid-year review, we had talked about tiers that we would, we can pull, given the need to reduce expenses throughout the course of '21. This flushes out those tiers a little bit more. I'm not gonna get to them in too much detail. You know, in tier one, we talk about holding open positions vacant. We have an open position now in Public Works. We're holding it vacant. We intend to hold that vacant into the year to start January 1, '21, until we have more information. So, as additional vacancies arise, we will study those closely and make decisions in order to maintain service levels and address our budget needs. Just like we did this year, we're gonna continue our review of capital investments at multiple times throughout the year, so there will be multiple decision points for the Board as we look at our road program, our alleys, our bricks, our sidewalks. And I apologize, I have my window open here and the train's going by. Contracted services in tier three is pretty straightforward, and then tier four is a review of service levels and associated staffing. We feel very confident, given the Village's strong financial position and the flexibility we have in the tiers above, that we won't have to get down to tier four. We will be prepared to do so, but we think we're well-positioned that that need will not arise next year. In the end, where we see our reserves going at the end of '21 is still above 30%. That's well above village policy and above the credit rating, credit rating agency targets for AAA-rated communities. And you may note that the 2020 estimated actual of 13.41 million in ending reserves is higher than we saw in our last monthly review based on our COVID scenarios. That's because we continue to see very positive revenue performance in August, September, and even October now, as sales tax numbers are starting to come in, as well as very strong real estate transfer numbers. So, there is very good news on the revenue side, and we are taking a very conservative approach to our '21 revenues, as you'll see when you dig into the budget. And then, in terms of budget schedule, we will have our budget workshop on Wednesday, October 28th. If we need a second workshop, we will do that in early November, and then the budget gets adopted November 24th and the tax levy shortly thereafter. That's all I have for this evening. We'll have a more detailed presentation on October 28th, and for the community, the budget is now available on our website. It'll also be on our eNews this week, and we'll share some highlights in that eNews blast as well.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Bremen. And again, this is just the introduction. There'll be plenty of opportunity for the trustees to ask questions of the staff on a, at our future meetings and, and otherwise, but thank you to the staff for their work so far on the budget. So, trustee Kennedy, I believe that's all on finance?
That's correct. Everything else is on the consent agenda.
Okay. So, now, as I said, we're gonna move over to the Administration Committee's report. That's trustee Dodd. You're muted, Kathy.
I am muted. Thank you. All right, we have one item, which is Presentation of the Administration Committee Recommendations Regarding Boards and Commissions, which is Introduction of Ordinance 2020-044, which is amending the Village, Willmet Village Code concerning boards and commissions. Before I turn it over to Mike, I would just like to make a few opening comments. To everybody on the Board, I'm very excited for our discussion tonight and look forward to feedback from all of you on the hard work by the Administration Committee over the past several months. I'm very proud of the work we've accomplished and also the process we followed. We held four public meetings on this topic, and resident feedback was a large part of each meeting. The material presented tonight is a result of the collaborative effort of everyone involved, which was residents, the staff, and the, and members of the committee. Our recommendations address many of the areas of public concern, increased diversity on our commissions, reinvigorating the Housing and Human Relations Commission with substantive and important goals, better communication of the Talent Bank questionnaire process, improvements in the appointment and selection process, and greater transparency in all aspects of our boards and commissions. I'm very hopeful we can reach a consensus tonight as a Board so we can move this important work into action. The community wants us to get these commissions active again, and I'm hoping we can do so very soon. I want to acknowledge we're making a number of suggested changes, but we should view these changes as a great, as a great starting point that can always be modified as needed. Once these commissions get organized and started, start their important work... Wow, sorry. My daughter's FaceTiming me. That's the only thing I didn't have muted. Once these commissions get organized and start their important work, with their feedback, we can always make tweaks as, as time goes on. Finally, just before I turn it over, I'd like to thank trustee Barrow and Sullivan for your dedication, commitment to this project. I know this was a lot of work, and you guys had a lot of patience with this process. And to Mike Bremen, our village manager, who helped lead this effort with me. Mike was instrumental in developing a process that ensured all residents had the opportunity to share their thoughts on the topic, and also did extensive research on what other communities have done that helped guide our discussion. I also want to thank the members in the community who attended our meetings and sent us many emails. I see a few of you on the call tonight, and thank you. I personally spoke to a number of you, and your feedback really helped me understand the issues before us and, and did shape our final product. To those trustees, as we go through this presentation, I believe most residents who followed the process felt that their voices were heard and their ideas seriously and thoughtfully considered, and are generally supportive of the recommendations by the committee. And so, for that, I'm very excited for this discussion. With that... With that, I'll turn it over to Mike, Mr. Berman, who has done a great summary of our recommendations, and I'll let him guide our discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Dodd. I'm going to pull this up. Okay. So, there's a very detailed report in the village board packet, as well as a significant amount of attachments. So, I'm going to try to move through this fairly quickly so that there's enough time for discussion and questions. But please slow me down at any point, and feel free to interrupt with any questions or comments as we move through the presentation. So, the Administration Committee held four meetings on this topic, and we addressed every topic at least twice at every meeting. So, there was a lot of thought and detail given to the consideration of the various matters that we reviewed. And as Trustee Dodd mentioned, a real cornerstone of this process, and I think that one of the most important parts of this for the committee, was the public engagement. And to that end, we had a lot of great public feedback, and as Trustee Dodd stated, it's helped to shape the committee's recommendations. So, the rest of this presentation is going to discuss the various recommendations of the committee. And this is just kind of a table of contents here to highlight what we're going to be talking about as we move through the presentation. First and foremost, the committee felt it was important that the village board affirm its goal in a statement of having a diverse group of residents on our boards and commissions. To that end, the committee has drafted this statement here that we would include on the Boards and Commissions page of our village website, as well as on our Talent Bank questionnaire, and in any communications we put out regarding boards and commissions, which we're going to talk about later in the presentation. So, if there is concurrence from the board in regards to the statement this evening, this is one of the first actions we're going to take and get this up on the website and get our Talent Bank questionnaire updated right away as we move into a recruitment process for the Housing and Human Relations Commissions. So, in terms of the Housing Commission, the committee reviewed our existing commission's purpose, looked, mission and purpose, and looked at the mission of housing commissions in other nearby communities. Ultimately, it was determined that the existing mission, which is provided here on this slide, is appropriate and did not need any amendments. That said, the committee did spend a lot of time reviewing functions of the Housing Commission. And I think we'd all agree, that's been the greatest challenge of the commission over the past many years, is that their functions have really focused on our housing assistance program. The commission was responsible for reviewing applications for assistance, for meeting with beneficiaries throughout the year, and helping to craft that program. As that program was transitioned to Housing on Womet, the commission didn't have any clear direction on what they should be doing. So, the committee has put together this really powerful and substantive list of functions for the Housing Commission moving forward. And these functions are listed in the order that the committee believes the Housing Commission should tackle these projects, with the caveat that, you know, we see the Housing Commission is really the experts on this. And if the commission believes certain items should be moved up, or should be moved down on the list, or worked on simultaneously, that's a discussion that the commission can have with staff and the Administration Committee and make sure we're tackling the most important projects first. I'm not going to read through the whole list, but the first couple that we'd expect the commission to start working on will be assisting in the review of the Housing Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan. Depending on timing, that may include review of the Housing Chapter and scope for our RFP, as well as a subsequent review of our Affordable Housing Plan. And also, assuming that the Optima project moves forward, there will be a new land trust created in the community, and we would expect the Housing Commission to work with not just this land trust with CIPA, but any future or other land trust, and make sure that those are implemented in the way that we feel is most appropriate. So, these other items will come after, but those are certainly two of the top, most important functions that the commission's going to tackle next year. In terms of the Human Relations Commission, unlike the Housing Commission, we're drafting a new mission statement here. Previously, the mission and purpose for the commission were a bullet point list of items, which we'll review on the next slide, but there was no big picture of what we wanted this commission to look like and to do and the value it should have for the community. So, the committee is recommending this new narrative mission statement at the top, and as part of this, you know, it's recommending that the initial task of the Human Relations Commission is to conduct community engagement initiatives, hold community discussions on racism, social equity, and community building, so that we can identify the needs of the community and determine where the Human Relations Commission should first focus their time and energy. And the thought being that the commission would then come back to the Administration Committee with a proposed work plan that we would work through together and then can be implemented. So, it's a different approach than the Housing Commission, but they're two very different issues that we think can be tackled in different ways. In terms of the purpose, these bullet points here are primarily what used to be the mission and purpose of the Human Relations Commission in the Village Code as it is now. Underlines are new additions that are recommended, strike-throughs are deletions. A couple of points here, and we had some really good resident feedback on this process in particular. We had a suggestion to review U.S. Department of Justice Guidelines on Human Relations Commissions to ensure that our purpose is consistent with those guidelines. That's the reason you'll see that last bullet point added at the end that adds some additional consistency. We are removing references to the arts. It just, the committee did not feel that was really the direction that, and the type of work that this commission is going to be asked to do. And then, on the second bullet point, we had some good feedback in terms of, you know, what the type of terminology we should be using. And you see we're removing the terminology minorities based on some resident feedback. Alex from the manager's office reached out to Northern Illinois University and some of their experts on diversity and inclusion, and they agreed with the recommendations from the resident to remove that term, add Black, Indigenous, and people of color. So, we are making those changes. And I'd also like to point out a new component of this slide that was not in your packet, and this was brought to my attention by Trustee Kennedy. We had omitted the line here for "all persons regardless of their religious beliefs." So, religious beliefs were discussed above in our broad diversity statement, as well as the commission's mission. They just did not carry down to the purpose. So, when we present the final ordinance for adoption at our next meeting, we'll make sure that this, this component is added to that ordinance. The committee also spent considerable time just reviewing membership components of all of our boards and commissions. We reviewed term limits and term lengths to, within our own context of Womet Board and Commissions, as well as in the context of those in nearby communities. The committee felt that we were consistent here internally and externally, and no changes are recommended. We briefly touched on consolidations. As the board may recall, there were a number of consolidations back in 2010. The committee and staff did not feel any consolidations were appropriate at this time. We are recommending changes to number of members. Housing Commission, the committee is recommending an increase from five to seven, and I think, given the substantive work that we have previously discussed, seven members certainly makes a lot of sense, given all the work that's upcoming for that commission. Of the Human Relations Commission, nine members is what is already in the code. The committee is recommending the inclusion of two students. Those students would have to be Womet residents, but could attend any high school in the area. And as part of the recommendation, it's that these two student terms would be for two years for each of the students. A general adult member of the commission has a three-year term. And then, the committee is also recommending that the Historic Preservation Commission be reduced from nine members to seven. That's consistent with some of our external comparables, as well as how we feel commissions and boards best operate in terms of the number of members. And actually, this wasn't intentional, but there are now seven members existing in the Historic Preservation Commission. So, there's no need to address the fact that we have more members already.
Hey, Mike. It's Trustee Sullivan. Just a quick clarification comment on the high school student. You said any local high school. Is it a local high school in Womet, or are we saying any on the?
No. It could be Loyola. It could be New Trir. It could be another high school in the area, but they do have to be a Womet resident.
Okay. So, Womet resident attending a high school in Illinois?
Correct.
Got it.
And then, finally, you know, as we talked about the Housing and Human Relations Commission, you know, we're going to be making a lot of appointments all at once, 14 appointments, not including the two students. And what we want to make sure does not happen is that all these new appointments don't expire at the same time. So, the committee is recommending that we stagger the initial terms for these appointments. So, we'd have one member appointed to a four-year term, three members to a three-year term, and three members to a two-year term. All members would then be eligible for a second three-year term to be able to serve a full amount of time. This is similar to what we did when we consolidated a number of commissions into the Human Relations Commission back in 2010. So, there's consistency with that. The one change is that back then, we had one member appointed to a one-year term. And I think as we studied that and thought about that a little bit more, that didn't really seem fair to that individual, and it wasn't really enough time for somebody to get up to speed and to add value to the commission. Membership changes continued. A number of our boards and commissions already have preferred qualifications, backgrounds, experience, that helps to guide the review and selection of candidates that we place on these boards or commissions. And on the flip side, a number of our bodies did not have any recommendations. So, the committee felt identifying some of these preferences would be helpful. None of these on this slide are requirements, but they do help not only guide the village president in reviewing applications and making selections, but they help to guide residents who may be interested. So, when we go out and we do recruitments, you know, we're also going to suggest that we're looking for this type of experience. While it's not necessary or required, it's certainly helpful, and that may help a resident better connect themselves to a particular board or commission. Human Relations Commission, while there are already preferred qualifications in the Village Code for the Human Relations Commission, the committee is recommending replacing the existing with this new statement here, that preference is given to candidates that will foster a diverse commission encompassing different races, ethnicities, religions, genders, sexual orientations, ages, and socioeconomic differences. And in addition, candidate preference may be given, but not required, to candidates that are disabled, or have a family member who's disabled, or have experience in training in promoting diversity, youth-oriented services, or are a veteran. So, this is a big change from the existing code, but it much, it really captures well what we're going to be asking the Human Relations Commission to do. And then, the committee spent considerable time on the appointment and selection process. And there's a number of recommendations that are coming from the committee, and the next three slides are going to address these. Before I get into detail, and there was a memo from the Corporation Council that was included in the board packet, we did a legal review of the appointment and selection process, and, you know, very clear that appointment authority rests with the village president. The Corporation Council's memo does clearly lay out, you know, how that process works, what the state law is, and how we got to that conclusion. Given that, that was the context that the committee worked within. So, first and foremost, there's three recommendations that the committee's making in general. The first is to enhance our recruitment efforts when we're looking to fill vacancies. And this is one area where we certainly have a lot of room to improve. So, we're going to implement, working with Metro Strategies, our communications consultant, a robust recruitment program, not just for these Human Relations and Housing Commission appointments that we're going to be making soon, but for all upcoming vacancies. Now, we historically have not advertised vacancies, you know, before a term expired or even when a term expired. We think through this process, we're going to start to bring in more TBQs and more qualified residents to help fill out our boards and commissions. We're also going to make improvements to the village website that are going to enhance transparency, make it easier to navigate. Alex on our team has already started to make some of those improvements, and that page is better than it was. Following the board's discussion, we'll update that even more so. And this, we got a lot of good feedback from the committee and the community to help us improve our website. And, you know, this is a fluid and ever-changing process. So, if we can continue to make improvements to the website, we certainly will. And then, we're going to streamline the TBQ submittal process and provide for online submittals through the website, so residents don't have to print up PDF, fill it out, scan it in, email it back. Try to make this process as seamless and as efficient as possible for our residents. And we're also going to ask, although not require, that residents include a resume if they have one with their TBQ submittal. One thing that we heard through this process was that, you know, we can communicate better with residents who submit a Talent Bank questionnaire. We do send a letter on behalf of the village president for every TBQ we get, but generally, that's the end of our communication process unless that individual is selected for an interview or for appointment. So, what we're going to do is make sure a village representative personally follows up with each resident who submits a TBQ. Part of that follow-up, we'll discuss, you know, maybe what are the major projects that board or commission's working on. We're going to develop a summary of our appointment and selection process that we'll provide to those new applicants. And then, each year, we're going to update and review the TBQs we have on file to make sure that candidates remain interested, see if their interest has expanded to other boards or commissions, and give them an opportunity to update their resumes and TBQs. So, when vacancies arrives, we have the most current information in our files for review. And then, finally, the committee is recommending a regular report from staff to the village board on a village board agenda that's going to address, you know, the status of our boards and commissions. It'll have current board and commission membership with term expirations, especially forecasting the vacancies that are coming up. We'll address the appointments that have been made up the past six months, as well as the status of TBQs on file. And this is, this is a report that's going to evolve over time based on feedback we receive from the village board. So, we'll do one of these in the first quarter of 2020. It will be off the consent agenda, so the board can discuss it, make sure it's meeting your needs, and we'll tweak that as we move forward. In terms of the selection process, the committee tackled this from two different standpoints. One are just our standard recurring appointments to all of our boards and commissions. And then separately, which we'll talk about in the next slide, is the unique circumstance of the Housing and Human Relations Commission. So, for this slide, anything underlined is a new recommended addition to the process. So, the committee is recommending, and we had just talked about, proactively communicating upcoming vacancies to the community, which we're going to start doing right away. As we do now, the village president and staff will review upcoming vacancies before they hit, as well as the TBQs for candidates who've marked those boards and commissions as interested. The village president, then, as he does now, or she would do, discuss the needs of the board or commission with staff. And then, important to the committee was also ensure that the board or commission chair is also consulted. The village president would continue to interview candidates prior to making a recommendation to the village board. And then, a new component here is that the village president would submit the recommended candidate to the village board in advance of placing the recommendation of appointment on the public agenda. And this gives the other six board members an opportunity to review that candidate's Talent Bank and express any concerns possibly to the village president without potentially embarrassing the candidate in the public forum. And, you know, this adds another set of eyes, you know, into the appointment and selection process. And then, the candidate would be introduced at a public board meeting, as we do now off the consent agenda. The candidate is typically asked to address the village board, explain their interest in serving, and a little bit about their background. And then, the committee is recommending and requesting that the village president include a written memorandum in the board's public agenda materials describing the candidate's qualifications and why they're recommended for appointment. And then, this can also be briefly summarized when the candidate is introduced for appointment at the public meeting. In terms of the Housing and Human Relations Commission, this is a unique process. It's 14 appointments, which is, on average, the amount of new appointments that are made in any given year. So, the committee felt important that there are some additional items or areas that are addressed as part of this process. So, first, you know, the committee is asking the village president to determine who will be appointed, and this is the commission chairs, and then collaborate with that individual to gather feedback on the candidate. So, the village president would identify the selected candidates that he, he seems to think make the most sense and are the best fits, provide those TBQs and resumes to the individual he would appoint as commission chair, seek feedback on those, and allow the commission chair to interview and talk with those candidates if that chair feels that would be appropriate. The village president is also then requested to submit a memorandum to the village board in advance of placing these recommendations on the public agenda describing the candidate's qualifications. And finally, the same or a similar memorandum would be placed in the village board's agenda materials that would describe each of the candidate's qualifications when these recommendations of appointment are made and prior to a vote by the village board. So, there are significant changes in the appointment and selection process, and there was a lot of time and a lot of thought given to this, not just by the committee, but by our residents as well who followed along through the process. And finally, several other miscellaneous changes. We're going to implement some more training and orientation for all board and commission members, just not new appointees, on Open Meetings Act, Freedom of Information, and village email policy, as well as land use policy documents for any of our land use-related commissions, and make sure that our board and commission members have a good handle on our policies and are comfortable with those policies when they're reviewing applications. There will also be annual reports and goals submitted to the Administration Committee from a number of our commissions, and this is addressed in the ordinance that's introduced tonight to the board. And finally, we want to enhance recognition for our board and commission members. There's a significant amount of time that our residents volunteer in service of their community, and we want to make sure they're acknowledged for that. So, acknowledgement at a board meeting following the completion of a term, provide a Womet-related keepsake at the same time, and also highlight some of our boards and commissions, and maybe even their members, in our social media. Not only does that recognize our residents for their service, but it may also help encourage other residents to volunteer and serve. In terms of next steps, if there's consensus amongst the board tonight, especially as it pertains to the Housing and Human Relations Commission recommendations, we'd like to begin our recruitment efforts right away in this week's e-news. our recruitment efforts right away in this week's E-News and upcoming social media and E-News Blast to try to fill the vacancies as quickly as we can. Our goal would be to fill those by the end of this year. That is somewhat aggressive, just given the timeline we need to devote to this recruitment process, the review of applications, and then the actual process of two meetings to make these appointments, and we only have one meeting in December. So if we can't complete it by the end of 2020, it'll certainly be completed very early in 2021. At our next meeting, we would anticipate adopting the ordinance codifying a number of the changes we've discussed. There will be some technical changes. Trustee Kennedy had submitted some very helpful changes that we will make before the next meeting, and we'll submit an updated memorandum to the board outlining those changes, but they certainly help to improve the document. And there may be others, as we've more closely studied this, following tonight's discussion. And then finally, we'll make sure we finalize our updates to the village website, to our TBQ form, as well as our training and our recognition efforts. So that's all I have in terms of a presentation on this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. Trustee Dodd, are there any other comments you want to make? Because what my thought was to, and I have a couple of comments on the materials that I'd like to make at the appropriate time, but that was my thought, that after you, if you had anything else to say, then we would sort of open it up to members of the board for any comments, and maybe the other members of the administration committee would speak after you. But you've already spoken, so you may not have more to say at this point.
No, I don't have anything more to say.
Trustee Barrow or Trustee Sullivan, is there anything you'd like to add?
Well, I would just echo, actually, Trustee Dodd's opening comments, but also give recognition that it was her perseverance and leadership that kept us on point. So it definitely was a good team effort. I think it was some terrific conversations, and she did an outstanding job leading the meetings and doing it in an efficient manner and good discussion. So it was a very good process and one that we should be proud of as a board and some committee members. So, nice job, Kathy.
Thank you, Dan.
Trustee Barrow?
I would second certainly Dan's thoughts on how our commission worked and how Kathy kept everybody moving from here to there and along. I was particularly pleased with the degree of resident involvement, both by email and in participation in our meetings. I really felt like we had a very good engagement on the part of an awful lot of people that cared very dearly about this process. And as you can see from both the number of meetings we had and the, I think, comprehensive quality of the report that, and recommendations that we've delivered, a great deal of thought's gone into this. And I think that, in particular, the changes to the Housing Commission and the Human Rights Commission are very responsive to what our community has been looking for for some time. The events of this spring and recently have certainly galvanized everyone's attention to human rights matters, and what we've done here, I think, is a very fine representation of how Wilmeth can do this very well. So thanks, Trustee Dodd, and thank you, Trustee Sullivan.
And thank you, Trustee Barrow. So I'm going to lead it off before Trustee Plunkett, Kennedy, and Kersman get an opportunity to comment if they'd like. I had sort of three comments on the materials, two of them which are really drafting questions. So on the Human Relations Commission, the preferred qualifications included, the last bullet was a veteran or experienced or trained in promoting veteran affairs, and that was consistent with my understanding that that's where the administration committee was headed on this. But on the Human Relations Commission purpose, the second bullet point, it didn't include veterans as one of the segments of the population that the commission should support. And I thought that was just a sort of a drafting oversight to include veterans on the list that starts with youth, seniors, persons with disabilities, to include veterans on that list. That seemed to be consistent with what the committee's intentions were. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes.
The second one is one really for Corporation Council, and it's not related to the changes that have come through this process, but in reviewing the ordinance, I noticed that there is a provision for how we handle vacancies on a board or commission in the code that's inconsistent with our actual practice. So the code says that if there's a vacancy on a board or commission, then that replacement appointee serves the remainder of that term, and that doesn't count as a term, and then they get whatever additional terms they get. In practice, as long as I've been here, the village records have reflected sort of an appointment date as the beginning of a term, and no sort of like partial term for the vacancy. I understand that there may be a reason for that in terms of staging when the vacancies come up, but it hasn't been our practice, and frankly, it could lead to, you know, I don't know if the zoning board is written this way, but on the zoning board where there's a five-year term, you arguably could have a 14-year term for a zoning board member, and I'm not sure that's what we want. So I would just ask Mr. Stein, Mr. Berman, to take a look at that issue and come back to the board with a recommendation on how we should resolve that. And then my third comment actually is substantive, and it relates to the term of the high school students on the Human Relations Commission. My thought with how you administer this is that you would enlist the assistance of all of the local high schools where a Wilmeth resident attends, and you know, so that's obviously Nutria, but it's also Loyola, and Regina, and Beacon, and Baker, and probably other schools, but those are the nearby ones. And, you know, get them to publicize the opportunity to students. And, you know, a cadence that could work quite nicely here for two reasons. One, given, you know, demands on the student's time and sort of maturity to really be involved here at a substantive level, you could publicize the opportunity at the beginning of students' junior year, so in September. And then, over the remaining months of the first semester, you know, have the schools facilitate getting some talent bank questionnaires to us. And so if we got a couple from every school, that would be quite a selection to choose from. And then have that candidate be appointed in January, and then they would serve to the following January, one year. So you would give sort of second semester junior year, first semester senior year, a really good age for them to get experience, the right time for that to get experience, in particular if they want to talk about community service on their college applications and the like. And you'd also give people the opportunity to, more people the opportunity to serve. So my thought was it was a one-year term that you would try to make it run from sort of January to January, overlapping the second semester of junior year and the first semester of senior year. So that's a suggestion that I would make. Obviously, the board will make a decision as a whole on that. And we don't have to discuss that now. What I would do instead is ask Trustee Plunkett, Kersman, and Kennedy if they had thoughts or suggestions. And I know, Trustee Kennedy, you already offered some thoughts to the staff, and we appreciate that for sure, but are there any other thoughts on sort of the substance of the presentation and the like that trustees have?
I just have a procedural question. Are we taking public comment at some point?
I am planning to take public comment both tonight and then at our next meeting when we actually vote on it.
And that will occur when? I'm just curious.
After we have our discussion.
I'll just speak briefly. I might have a couple more thoughts after public comment. I would be kind of interested, I think the residents have been fabulously engaged in this over the last several months, and I'd just kind of like to hear if there is anything new I might have a comment after that. I want to thank the administration committee. I think they've done a fabulous task, and reading all the material, it just, it sounds really exciting and really hopeful for what lies ahead. As to your comments, President Polinski, I hadn't really specifically thought about the terms, but having two teenagers myself, two years probably sounds endless to them. So I can see that a one-year commitment in terms of your high school career sounds very manageable, and that's definitely something that I think I would be in support of. I don't know, I'd like to hear from the other administration committee members on that. I might have other thoughts. I just, that's where I'm starting with.
Okay. Trustee Kersman, any initial thoughts?
No, like Trustee Plunkett, I'd love to hear from the residents, but thank you for asking.
I feel the same way.
Okay.
By the way.
Right, and so before I open it for public comment, let me just say as well, thank you to the administration committee for their hard work, and in particular, to Trustee Dodd for her leadership. I think you ran a great process. I think this is a very good set of recommendations here. This review was planned for some time, and it had been delayed for a number of reasons. It had been 10 years since the board last looked at the boards and commissions. That was prior to even my service on the board when they were last looked at. So very excited about this. I think you guys did a great job, and this is just a really thoughtful process that engaged the community, and I think that's really important, and it's something we strive for all the time on the board, is making sure that our processes engage the community. And I think that's a result of the way Trustee Dodd and the other committee members, as well as the staff, ran the process. So thank you for that. All right, so the village board is not voting on an ordinance tonight, but I will still open the meeting to public comment. And again, I'm going to repeat the same boring stuff that I said before to walk through the process here. At an in-person meeting, I would have asked for a show of hands, but we're not in person. So what I'll do is I'll ask people who are watching on YouTube Live to submit comments for the staff to read, and you can find the chat window to the right of the YouTube Live video window. We will also have comment from people who are connected by Teams or via the phone who would like to address the board. And as I said before, I will first create a list, and then I will go back to the individuals on the list to give them their three minutes, and I'm pulling up my phone right now. Okay, so people that are connected via the telephone or via Microsoft Teams, you are probably still muted, so if you would like to address the board, please unmute, let us know your name, and I will add you to the list. Mr. Orr, I see that you're unmuted, but I don't hear you.
Unable to see me or hear me now?
I can hear you now, and I can see you as well. Welcome. So you would like to be added to the list?
I would, please, thank you.
Okay. Any other individuals who'd like to be added to the list to address the board this evening? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Orr, let me start the clock here. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I too would like, I should start by saying, my name is Peter Sung Orr. I am a resident of Wilmeth since 2012. I like to voice my comments in support of the administration committee's recommendation. I'd like to start by also thanking the members of the administration committee, Trustee Dodd, Barrow, and Sullivan. They provided a transparent, open discussion, thoughtful discussion throughout the process. Obviously, not everything that everyone wanted, but the discussions were such that everyone's voices were heard. And so my appreciation for the committee's work. With regards to the actual recommendation, I believe that the mission statement and the outline of both the Housing Commission and the Human Relations Commissions provide a platform that will allow for meaningful work that is still relevant in a wonderful place like Wilmeth. I am aware of a racial incident that occurred in the last two weeks in the city, and so we are, there is significant opportunity for the Housing, excuse me, the Human Relations Commission to have a role in the betterment of our community. And I would also voice support for, in the recommendation, there are, there's two languages, there's two narratives about the Housing Commission's mission statement, and I would voice my support for the first of the two. There was an alternate language, but I believe the language that speaks about the advisory body speaks strongly about the role of the Human Relations Committee. My final topic I wanted to mention is that while the mission statements and the goals of both commissions are terrific, I think ultimately the role of the commissioners who are appointed will determine the success of either commissions. And that entails, as was presented, a rigorous, open outreach to our fellow residents of Wilmeth to participate in this process, volunteer to be a part of this process. I am a bit disappointed in that the recommendation did not include a greater opportunity for other trustees to be involved in the recommendation portion for commissioner. I understand, without impinging on the village president's role in making the appointment, I still believe that the trustees, the other trustees, should have a greater role in the selection, or at least the recommendation to the village president of who the commissioners should be. One comment, as you mentioned, President Polinski, about the high school member of the Housing, excuse me, Human Relations Commission, having a daughter who participated in a national organization as a high school student where her role was for a two-year period, I recognize that having a one-year period is probably too short for a period because of the learning curve, and it will unfortunately serve more as a resume filler versus something substantive. I know the time requirements and the limitation of the high school students' activities may limit who would be involved, but however, but I believe a two-year period would truly provide a substantive role for the high school student, and I believe from the discussions of the administration committee members, that's what they're looking for. They're looking for a substantive role for the high school student.
Mr. Orr, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up. I've given you five minutes instead of three, so.
I appreciate that. My apologies. With that, I will just simply say that I fully support the recommendations, and thank you very much for the process.
Thank you, Mr. Orr. Okay, so Mr. Orr was the only individual who identified himself. Were there any comments that were submitted via YouTube Live chat?
Yes, President Polinski, this is Peter Skiles, and we have one comment from Cindy Fay, who has a comment about the length of the student term. She states, "Limiting the high school student's term to one year has another benefit besides those mentioned tonight. More young people will have the opportunity to serve on the commission." And that was Cindy Fay.
Okay, thank you. Apologize, I'm looking at my computer, it just told me, even though it's plugged in, or I thought it was plugged in, I have only 10% left, so if all of a sudden I disappear, I apologize. And if... So if all of a sudden I disappear, I apologize in advance. Okay, so that is our public comment. I'll go back, trustee Kersman, Kennedy, Plunkett. You had all said you wanted to hear public comment before you spoke further. Is there anything else that you'd like to add at this point in time? Again, we will, we will be voting on ordinance, and there will be opportunity for discussion at our next meeting as well. But certainly want to give you the opportunity to talk now as well.
This is trustee Kennedy. I was fairly well convinced by Mr. Orr's statement about the term of the high school students. I can understand that there are a lot of high school students who may be reluctant to commit two years, but there is a learning curve to this. And we do want to, while a lot of participation by a lot of people is desirable, I think it's even more desirable to have somebody really commit. And that may require two years for them to really understand what's going on and make a substantive contribution to what the committee is doing. And I don't think we should be in the business of just providing people something to put on their resume. So I would strongly favor the two-year commitment over the one-year commitment. But aside from that, I have very few comments about the administration committee's report, because I think they've done an outstanding job. And I'm extremely pleased with how quickly they did it, how professionally, how well they included comments and suggestions from the community. And I've heard from multiple people about how much they admired Kathy Dodd's chairmanship of it and her leadership, and I would second that all the way.
Thank you.
Trustee Plunkett, trustee Kersman?
Sure, is there, it looks like there's somebody has a hand raised. I don't know. Speak, did we miss?
Yes, Van Gilmer.
Hi, Van, how are you?
All right, how are you?
Good, good. Did you want to address the board? We passed through it already.
I do. I would like to.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
I would like to, yes.
Okay. Well, I will, I will make an accommodation for you, and I'll reopen public comment for your comments. So I will, I will offer you up your three minutes.
I would have been disappointed, Van, if we hadn't heard from you, so thank you. I wasn't sure where you were.
Man, I just, have you, has your Talent Bank questionnaire filled out yet? That's all I want to know. I haven't got your Talent Bank questionnaire yet.
Look, almost had to have my arm twisted by me to say something. I do want to thank, though, the administrative committee for its commission, for its hard work. I moved here 14 years ago with my wife. She died suddenly, and I thought I was going to only be here for two years. Well, I've been here these 14 years, and it hasn't been until recently that I've had this very strong feeling that we must do something. For a long time, I felt kind of like a representative of African Americans in Willmett and the North Shore. And these days, I think it's just extremely important that we do more than write guidelines, but that we figure out how we are going to be able to not only attract people of color, but to make them also feel very welcomed in Willmett and in the North Shore. All the time I've been here, I have loved my being in Willmett, but I have not loved being a single black man on the street or in my car. And I often wonder, would we ever change? And in order for us to change, we have to do something like we're starting again here with these two commissions. First, Human Relations, to begin to make people feel like they might even be welcomed here. In Housing, there isn't a community around now that is anything like Willmett and the North Shore that isn't thinking about how it can increase the representation of African Americans and people who are brown in the schools and in the community. And so housing has to be thought of, but how you have it and how you communicate it is also very important. So I don't have more to say. I mean, I have lots to say, but I know that I need to speak now so that you see that from whoever there are in the North Shore who feel like we just don't feel included, I think we need to work very hard at it. And I'm willing to assist anybody who wants to work for that end. And I appreciate your letting me say these few words.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your raising your hand.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Plunkett, for pointing that out. Okay, so trustee Kersman?
Yeah, please. I'd like to join everyone else in commending the committee for its excellent work. And I'd also want to salute all the residents who were engaged in the process once that process was made available to them. And that says to me that when we engage our residents and when we are in tune with the sense and sensibilities of our residents, we can do great things and very meaningful things. I think this happens to reflect the sense and sensibilities of the residents before the events of spring, as trustee Barrow pointed out. But we've come to it now, and we've done it well. And I just finished how I started, which is to thank the committee for what it did. And I like the product that you produced. So thank you.
Okay, so it seems like the only sort of tweak is my ask on one-year versus two-year. And I don't know if there's a consensus. You know, I think the staff could use direction on that. I mean, trustee Kennedy, you're two. Trustee Plunkett, are you still one or are you two?
Well, I'd like a little time to mull that over. And I also, I think we need to acknowledge too that, you know, these things, you know, we're at a starting point here, and these things can be tweaked.
That's right.
And we can also, you know, see how it goes. And I think especially with, you know, this high school term in particular, that may or may not change down the road. So I don't think I'm ready to quite chime in tonight, but maybe, you know, with a little bit more information.
Well, and we could certainly leave that to the next meeting as well.
Could I say something too related to that, Mr. Polinski?
Of course.
President Polinski? I mean, I wonder, could we be, I don't want to say vague, but, you know, I think that the, our discussions with the high schools are going to really lead, help us answer the question. Because I don't think, at least I'm not, I don't know that I know what the right answer is between one and two. And so could we just be more vague in our ordinance and say, you know, the terms will be between one and two years? And so if we get one student who's willing to do it 18 months, and another student that's willing to do it for a year, but we think those are the right candidates, you know, and just see how it plays out? I mean, we, and I don't know how...
Yeah, trustee Dodd, I think your suggestion is, and I can't believe, I didn't think of it as well. We should ask the high schools what they think.
Right.
You know, let's see what they think. And then we can come, the staff can come back to us and say, here's what we heard from the high schools. They think X is the right answer. And I think, I think your suggestion, that was what you just said, and I think that's the suggestion. And so, Mr. Stein, I see he unmuted. We can, we can fill that blank in later, can't we?
Yeah, we can, well, we would want to have some sort of term in there. It could be something like trustee Dodd had said. The term can be one year and automatically extended for an additional year based upon the student's acceptance of that. I mean, that could be something that the student could then make that determination. But what I was going to suggest is maybe I draft an alternate version of this, or two or three versions for the, for the board of trustees to mull over and lead the discussion for next, in the next two weeks, along now with actually reaching out to the high schools as well.
That may, yeah. But let's not make that decision tonight, I guess, is what I think. And we'll get more information.
When I was even proposing, I don't know that we need to make that decision in two weeks. So I was actually just proposing that we try to leave the length of term open. And then, President Polinski, as you're starting to, you know, fill out these, you know, as people are starting to submit the TBQs, and, you know, staff goes and speaks to the high schools, and we try to do some promotion, we let the process kind of help us define what is the right term. And then when you're, at the time that you're coming back to the board, and, you know, here are the recommendations, you can say, and these student terms will be, you know, based on, I don't know, I don't know how others feel, but that's, I would be comfortable with that.
Yeah, let's, Jeff, let, Mr. Stein, can I suggest that we, we put something in the ordinance? And then, but we all know we're planning to amend it with whatever the answer becomes.
Yes, something should be in the ordinance, and yeah, we can always change it going forward. So I'll start slow, and we can work our way up to there.
Okay. All right, so I think that's all we needed to accomplish tonight. Does the staff have what it needs from us?
Yes, we do.
Trustee Dodd, final words?
Yeah, so I do want to, I want to make sure I'm clear on a couple things here. Just, so, President Polinski, you indicated that we'll, you know, this, we're just introducing this ordinance tonight. You know, it'll be, we'll take a vote on it next in two weeks. But I want to make sure we have consensus from the board that we can start to really promote, you know, that this can be included in E-News, that the board is okay with, you know, the commit, the backgrounds of each of these commissions, the length of term, you know, so that we can really start the process. And I just want to make sure that I'm not leaving this with a different expectation than what you have.
Well, my expectation was, that's what I was asking people if they had any concerns about anything. And in essence, hearing none, I, my presumption is that people are on board with, with the report and the recommendations. And if that's incorrect, you know, speak up.
And I think that's, I get the sense that that's what people are feeling, besides me.
Okay.
Are we open for business already? I know there are a lot of Talent Bank questionnaires that are ready and filling tall, but I mean, are we saying this to people? Or are we waiting two weeks, or we...
No, 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 we should, I thought the staff said they wanted to do it this week.
Yep.
Yes, great, okay.
It'll be in this Friday's, it'll be in this Friday's E-News, a featured news post on our website, and then in upcoming social media blast and E-News blast.
And trustee Plunkett, you can check with the Ridge View, but I've been there at least eight times since Labor Day, meeting with people for coffee. So those, those Talent Bank questionnaires that have come in, many of them have had meetings already.
And so I would like to just say one last thing then, which is, first of all, appreciate all the nice comments, but I do think that what Peter Orr said is a really nice way for us to kind of end this discussion, which is, these commissions are only as good as the people that serve on them. And I, we all, I think, agree with that and concur with that. And so for those of you who are still on the call, or for all of those of you who have participated in this process, you know, all of us can help recruit people for these, for these openings. And so obviously, we're going to make a big effort on behalf of the board and through E-News to do that, to do this. But I encourage all of you, if you have friends or you yourself have an interest, please submit a Talent Bank questionnaire. Feel free to reach out to any, any of the staff or any of the board members here, because we obviously are looking for talented and interested people to serve on these commissions, because you ultimately are going to help drive the future here. So please.
Yeah, and I would just conclude with, we're very lucky in our community. There's lots of communities that have talented individuals who aren't willing to put their time in. But I believe we're somewhat unique in that we have very busy people who are willing to, you know, share their talents with the community. And by the way, that includes the six members of the village board here that are with me on this call tonight. So that is greatly appreciated. And anytime we have a volunteer come up, that's always a comment that I'll make. So, okay. Trustee Dodd, I think this is the only item on the administration committee tonight.
Yes, yes, all of it, yes, that's the only item.
All right, so trustee Barrow, you're not used to having to wait, but we're going to move now to the land use committee. Trustee Barrow?
Thank you, President Polinski. We have two matters on our agenda tonight. The first is item 6.11, zoning board of appeals, case number 2020-Z-25, 2133 Greenwood Avenue, regarding a request for a 0.02-foot side yard setback variation and a variation from the requirement that a single-family dwelling with two or more enclosed parking spaces maintain at least two enclosed parking spaces to permit the subdivision of the property and retention of the existing home in accordance with the plans submitted.
And that was a motion, right?
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Okay, so it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, that was trustee Dodd. This item comes to us with a negative recommendation from the zoning board of appeals, so we'll need five votes tonight to overturn the recommendation of the zoning board. Mr. Adler, would you, oh, there you are. Would you summarize the issues in the case for the board members?
I will. My computer just locked up. I'm on my phone. If I could ask Eric or Mike if they could open up the PowerPoint for me?
All right, working on it, John, it's in the...
Thank you. I apologize. If you hear a humming in the background, it's my laptop just...
John, did you save it in the comment folder?
I did. Yeah, and it would be under 10:13.
And John, you might need to move a little closer.
Oh, you're not, no.
Yes. It is basically your mouth on the screen right now, so...
Sorry.
All right, I got to hear you.
Before we start.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Well, this is a request. Well, I won't read the request again, but the, ultimately, if the village board grants the request, the applicant can leave the home after doing the modifications and pursue the subdivision to build a house on the eastern lot and leave the existing house with the modifications on the western lot. If the request is denied, then the applicant will have to decide if they would go through with the subdivision. If they don't go through with the subdivision, we would then have to see if the owner is going to seek the subdivision and then look for a buyer who would remove the house and develop both properties with two new single-family homes. The variation standards, I won't go through them, but these are the standards that must be met for the variation to be granted. Findings of fact, this is, you're aware of, this was a three-to-three vote. So there was a tie, but in this case, it comes as a negative recommendation. Again, I will not read through the findings, but they were pretty detailed in both of the cases you have tonight. That's just the proposed site plan. The site plan that shows what would happen to the existing house if this relief is granted. A driveway would be put in that would go to a one-car garage. It would be a conversion of living space back to the one-car garage as it was when it was originally built. You'll also see when you look at the existing survey, the screen porch and the two-car garage would be removed off of what would then be the eastern lot. And the next slide is just the properties that exist today. And then the subdivision, actually, the subdivision was, preliminary subdivision approval was actually granted back in September of 2018. The applicant did not at that time come back for... The applicant did not at that time come back for final approval, so that approval expired. This would be on the agenda for the Plan Commission on November 17th for the subdivision if, if need be.
And Mr. Adler, on that point, this is sort of a routine subdivision. I mean, it meets all the standards, the lot sizes are...
Yes.
The equivalent, so this is not, this is not something that, you know, is likely, I'm being careful with my words because Mr. Stein just lit up on my screen. This is, this is, this is, we wouldn't say that this was, this was an extraordinary request and, that they made at the time, nor would it be an extraordinary request today that the Plan Commission would, would have in front of them.
Correct. And actually, on the next slide, you'll see there, I have both the aerial and then the building outline, and it does show the lot sizes. And you, you could tell, well, this isn't the full block, that this really is the largest lot on this block. There are, I think, two 75-foot wide lots or homes on 75-foot wide lots to the, to the west there where they split a 50-foot before, between them. But then I think every other home on this, this block, particular block is on a 50-foot wide lot.
And, and Mr. Stein, just quickly, what would be the grounds, if any, that the Plan Commission would be able to deny the subdivision?
So the only time that a Plan Commission or the Village Board can deny a subdivision is if a variation is being sought. It seems in this case, there is no variation to this subdivision being sought, therefore it becomes a ministerial act. So the Village Board really has no control over someone to subdivide their property, as long as that subdivision meets every element of our code.
And so in the event that the Plan Commission or the, or the Village Board at a future meeting decided that, well, we didn't, we don't like the idea of a subdivision, what would likely happen? To, what would likely happen?
What essentially could happen is that the homeowner or the applicant could file, what's called a writ of mandamus, which is old Latin word for making a public official do a, perform a ministerial act. There's quite a bit of case law. I've actually provided a memo to this board, well, this previous board, I think, back in like 2017 or 2018 on a very similar issue. So we would essentially be forced to allow the subdivision, again, as long as there's no variations sought during, for that subdivision.
Yeah, in my recollection on...
Subdivision variations, different.
Right, my recollection on this original case was there weren't any, when we, when we approved the subdivision, whenever it was.
Yeah, I don't believe there was, there wasn't either.
Okay. All right, sorry, Mr. Adler, I took you off track, but I wanted to talk subdivision.
Nope, nope. The, the last slide is just the outline of the, the buildings in the full, full block and showing the subject property. And that is the last of the slides in introducing the request.
Questions for Mr. Adler from the Village Board? Okay, so I hear no questions right now. So I will turn the floor over to either Mr. Murdock or Mr. Garrison, whoever is planning to lead the conversation. Welcome, and, you know, the board members have reviewed the report from the Zoning Board, they are familiar with the project. Please certainly take some time to describe the project, but I'd ask you to focus your comments on addressing the concerns raised by the Zoning Board. Mr. Adler referenced the Zoning Board's finding of fact in his presentation, and as he said, it was a split, but if you, if you look at the comments that were made, they basically revolve around hardship and, and the like. And so make sure you address those questions, please. Thank you. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Murdock or Mr. Garrison, whoever's going to take the floor.
Thank you very much. I'll take the floor. I believe Rob may speak a little bit later, but first of all, good evening and thank you for taking the time to hear the case. We do appreciate the time. As John had mentioned, we're seeking zoning relief in two ways. The first is a 0.02-foot side yard setback, which amounts to a little bit less than a quarter of an inch, and it didn't seem as if anyone was overly concerned about that. So the, the one-car variation was more the focus, and so my comments will be focused really on that. I will note that as we had this, as President Balinski had mentioned, the subdivision was in fact granted in 2018. So I will talk in terms of this as being two lots, which technically is not the case now, but, but by right, it can be two lots. And I think it does have a bearing on how we look at this property. I'd also note that if you review the, the half of the staff prepared, there was really only one historical case that concerned the elimination of a parking space, and that was 828 Livingston, and that variation was granted. So going back to the Zoning Board case, Chairman Schneider voted against the plan, but he stated he believed that we met standards one, five, and six, and one is the hardship. He didn't express an opinion specifically on three and four, but he said specifically that we did not meet two. The plight of the property owner was not created by the owner and is set due to unique circumstances. I think for me to address that, I really do need to go back to the hardship a little bit, as, as I see it, as I believe it's defined, because I think that answers the question of why, you know, the current owner or myself, we did not create the hardship. The hardship is that this property is required to have its required parking on a separate lot. There's no practical way to provide two covered parking spaces on the 50-foot wide lot at 2133 Greenwood. It was built, as so many houses in Kenilworth Gardens are, with a single-car garage, and it was a legal conforming structure when it was built. Because of the way the house is sited on the lot, there's no way to access a second spot. Some houses in Kenilworth Gardens have, have created two tandem spots where they put a second spot behind the first, but unfortunately, with this house, the, the only bathroom on the first floor is directly behind where the garage originally was. To have enough space to get a driveway around to the back of the property and put a two-car garage there, it's not possible with the way this house was built. What's ironic about this case in a lot of ways is if I were to come to you today and say that I have a house and I want to build this house on this lot, but I want to put my parking on a second lot, I would actually be required to obtain a special use to do that. And I would have to meet the, I think it's the 13 or 14 standards of review for a special use. So what I want to do is I want to put the house back onto its single 50-foot wide lot with a single-car garage as it was originally designed. If I were trying to do what is, exists today, I would be required to get a special use. But again, I'd like to go back to the hardship. The hardship is that the property is required to have its, its required parking on a separate lot. And so when I take a look at that in terms of Chairman Schneider's concern about the second standard, the plight of the property owner was not created by the owner is due to unique circumstances. We didn't create this situation where the parking has to be on a second lot. What had happened was, when this, after this house was built, an owner a long, long time ago decided to put a two-car garage on the adjacent property. At that point, he had every reason to believe that he could or a future owner could convert it back to the original house. Because in that time, since then, the zoning law has changed, requiring a second parking space on the lot, that's no longer permitted. And so that's where we have a challenge with, with, with the, the property. We didn't create that plight. The plight, the plight was created by the fact that the zoning laws had changed since this building was redesigned and, and company built onto a second lot. I'd like to touch briefly on Standards Three and Four, although no one in the Zoning Board specifically said we didn't meet them. I think there was some question about them. So again, Standard Three, "The difficulty or hardship is particularly with the property in question and is not generally shared by other properties classified in the same zoning district or used for the same purposes." I'm not aware of any other 100-foot lots in Kenilworth Gardens or really throughout that entire area. As John had shown in the aerial view, the vast majority of properties in the area are 50-foot wide lots. There are a handful of 75-foot wide lots, there really are no 100-foot lots. So that clearly is unique. Going to Standard Four, "The difficulty or hardship resulting from the application of the zoning ordinance would prevent the owner from making reasonable use of the property. However, in fact, the property could be used more profitably with the variation than without, shall not be considered grounds." So I'm going to take the second part and then I'll come back to the first part. You know, from what's the highest and best use of this property? I think it's fairly unambiguous that it's either two new construction homes or it's one single new construction home. And again, because there are no other 100-foot lots, it's certainly possible that, that someone would pay a significant premium to have a much larger house in Kenilworth Gardens. And as you take a look at some of the, the feedback you have from the neighbors and some of the conversations I've had with the neighbors, that's really, I think, what most people are most concerned about, that by right, someone could come in with a 100-foot single-family home here that wouldn't be in keeping with the neighborhood. I don't want to go too far off on a tangent, but some of you may remember that I actually requested a zoning variation for a new construction home, you know, 15, 18 years ago, maybe even a little bit longer, because I didn't want to build a 35-foot-high house in Kenilworth Gardens. I didn't think it fit with the neighborhood, but at that point, in the zoning code, there was a significant added bonus that was given for a third floor. And I basically came to the, the Zoning Board and then the Village Board and said, "From an economic standpoint, I need that space to make my numbers work, but I'd love to put it on the first or second floor." Of course, the Zoning Board denied it. The Village Board denied the case because we don't grant variations for new construction homes. But I was very pleased that over the course of the next couple of years, the zoning laws were rewritten so that, and I, I believe now the requirement is that homes in Kenilworth Gardens can't be more than 30 feet. And I think that's appropriate for the development in that neighborhood. And, you know, from my perspective, I really do want to look at what's best for the neighborhood. I truly believe what's best for the neighborhood is one new construction home, but preserving the existing home on the second lot. Going back to the first part of Standard Four, "Preventing the owner from making reasonable use of the property." I'm not aware of any other property, certainly in Kenilworth Gardens and really throughout the community, where an owner is required to have parking on a separate lot. I don't think that's reasonable. And, and so I think that what makes the most sense is to allow this home to be reverted back to how it was originally designed, so we can preserve the home. And I would point out that, you know, going back to Standard Six, you know, the, one of the, the goals of the comprehensive plan is to preserve the existing housing stock and preserve different types of, types of houses. So in terms of the standards, I, I touched on Standards Two, Three, and Four, which, which the Zoning Board had talked about. I'd like to go back to that question about what's best for the, the neighborhood. And it was interesting, in the Zoning Board case, in the Zoning Board hearing, there, there was a fair amount of talk about the benefits of preserving an existing house versus the loss of a parking space. And it was interesting to me that, that several of the Zoning Board members were very concerned about the loss of the parking space. And I probably, to be fair, didn't do a good job of addressing that issue, because I knew in this part of Kenilworth Gardens, on this street, in this location, parking really isn't a problem, or more accurately, it's not as much of a problem as elsewhere in Kenilworth Gardens. We're all very aware that parking can be challenging in Kenilworth Gardens, the streets are narrow, the houses are, are close together, 50 feet apart. There are a number of houses that only have a one-car garage, which causes some people to, to park on the streets. But in this particular part, and I believe Rob's going to speak to this more in more detail, there really are very few one-car garages in the immediate vicinity. Parking on the street generally isn't a problem. And I think what's probably most relevant with this case is you have in your packet a number of neighbors who've spoken out in favor of the, the application, but there's not a single neighbor who has spoken out against it. Parking just isn't a challenge here. And by the way, with this house, while it's not an ideal configuration, it's possible with what I'm proposing to have three cars off the street, one in the garage, and this particular driveway, because the old garage was set back further, would allow queuing of two cars on the driveway off the street as well. There are many other single-car garages in Kenilworth Gardens that could only handle one car off the street. So again, I guess I would just like to, to conclude by noting that the neighbors surrounding the property who have weighed in all have been in favor of it, no one has spoken out against it. And I, I'd like to finish by saying I simply want to restore this house to its intended use as it was built, and like so many other homes in Kenilworth Gardens. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, or I'd be happy to turn it over to Rob.
Questions for Mr. Murdock from the trustees?
I have a question. Throughout this, I heard a lot of explanation that you can't possibly put a two-car garage because, because there's a bathroom. Can't you move the bathroom?
Well...
Or is that just a matter, in other words, is it just a matter of cost? Or is it absolutely impossible to move the bathroom?
No, so, and again, I, I did use the word can't, and I should probably qualify that. You know, in, in construction, you can do virtually anything. But again, cost does become a factor at some point. The way this house was designed, it was designed with a bathroom in a certain location. There are plumbing stacks that, that feed the second floor. They would be in the way of a tandem spot behind. The house isn't big enough, isn't deep enough to handle two tandem spots. So you'd be talking about putting an addition on the back, you'd be talking about rerouting plumbing. There's not an obvious place where you would put the bathroom in the first floor without doing another addition. Of, of course, anything could be done, but it's, the question is whether it's practical. And I don't believe with this house, with this layout, that it's practical to put an addition on the house to extend further. And keep in mind, there is some crawl space in that area back there, in the front of the house where the, the previous parking space was, that's on slab. So you'd have to look at reinforcing that as well. It would be a major undertaking.
But it, but it's not impossible.
Nothing's impossible. I mean, you could, in theory, eliminate the family room, eliminate the, the bathroom behind, and drive through the house and then have a two-car garage in the back as well. There's lots of things that are possible, and I'm not trying to be facetious, I'm, I'm really not. It's just, it's just not, in my opinion, from a construction standpoint, it's not practical. Because again, you'd have to reinforce that, that area that you want to be able to either have a second spot or to pass through, you'd have to relocate plumbing, you'd have to find another spot for a bathroom. I don't consider it to be practical.
Other questions for Mr. Murdock?
Mr. Murdock, it's Trustee Sullivan. So help me understand, what will this house look like at the, I mean, what sort of size from a floor area ratio, bedrooms, be the, the existing house that you're going to preserve?
Absolutely.
And maybe I missed that, maybe I missed that in the plan, but there's no plans in here that we're reviewing.
Well, no, there's no plans because we're not planning on modifying the house in any way. The, the house as it's configured, in terms of the, the floor area ratio, the way the village calculates it, is slightly under 2,750 feet. It's a four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath house. It's a great house. It's like so many other houses in Kenilworth Gardens. If someone were to build new, they'd be able to increase it to over 3,400 square feet. But, so this house is substantially smaller than what's permitted. I assume it's substantially smaller than what a new house would be built on the site, but again, from a neighborhood perspective, I think the real risk is that you end up with one single large house over both lots that's just not in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, but would be permitted by right.
Right, okay.
And, and the house, the, the new house, sort of by our code, would, would likely have a two-bedroom garage in the back with an alley, with a driveway going the length of the property with impervious surface increasing. And, and if, if it were two teardowns instead of one teardown, that would likely be the other one as well, because of the need for a two-car garage. Is that correct?
It's, you know, they're 50-foot-wide lots, so it's not impossible to put an attached garage on those houses. You generally see attached garages on lots that have a deeper lot, because they tend to, you can, you can drive straight in, but then you have, excuse me, a very small space for the side of the garage. So what's a more common design element is you actually sort of have the garage in front and you turn into it. Because of, you know, setback issues, it's difficult to do that kind of a configuration on a lot as short as these, I think they're about 120 feet. So I think you would assume that both of these houses would be built with two-car detached garages in the back of the property with those longways going in the back of the property. That's correct, yes.
Other questions for Mr. Murdock?
This might be a question for Mr.
This might be a question for Mr. Adler. I'm just...
I'm definitely planning to call Mr. Adler back into the game here.
Okay. Okay.
But you can go ahead and ask Wade.
No, I can wait. I was mostly, I was asking about the square footage and the garage bonus. You know, when we talk about, you know, what would be permissible in a new construction for this size lot, does that include the detached garage? Does that include the garage bonus or not?
A new house would be able to do a garage with a bonus of 440 square feet. This house is not going to, this house is not using that entire 440 square feet. So even if this house had an addition on, it would be smaller than a new home by the difference between the existing garage and a 440-square-foot garage. So if the existing garage is 200 square feet, they would be leaving 400, sorry, 240 square feet of garage bonus space on the table with this existing house remaining there instead of a new house being built, if that makes sense.
I think so. So I, just to clarify, if a new house could be 3,400, 3,500 square feet, does that include the 400-square-foot garage bonus? Or is the garage bonus...
I believe, Mr. Murdock, it did, right? I don't have the calculations in front of me, but...
And I apologize, I don't have the calculations in front of me either. So I'm not sure if that garage bonus was included. 34, I'm potential of a new house. Or the... The permitted floor area for this size lot is 3,429.36, but I do not know if that includes the additional garage bonus or not. I apologize. I didn't look at that because I don't want to build a new house. I want to preserve this house.
Okay, I have a question for Mr. Murdock. This is Trustee Dodd. So it's kind of just piggybacking on Dan Sullivan's comment, just, or Trustee Sullivan. I just want to make sure I understand. So I'm looking at kind of a diagram that's in our material that kind of shows the existing property. It shows that you've got the home, then the attached enhanced, the front porch, and then the brick garage. And it's hard because I don't quite understand, obviously, where the everything's going. And so, but in what you're, and then I have kind of what you're proposing, just a diagram, one of the first things in the material. It's on, it's like a picture. I'm just going, you know, that kind of shows, you know, that you're taking off the screen and porch, and you're taking off the garage. And so, are you, are you taking off those two pieces? Got two pieces. Are you taking off the screen, that screened-in porch and the current garage entirely, removing it in your plan?
Yes, right.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct. If you take a look at the two diagrams, one shows the entire property and one shows just the house itself. With both of them, it shows a concrete walkway. I did have another diagram that I submitted to staff that showed basically a driveway where that concrete walk is. And if you've been in the neighborhood, 2201 Greenwood is virtually the exact same house.
Okay, yeah, I looked at that.
Houses on the 70-foot lot, 75-foot lot that now has additions. But so, where you see the concrete walk and the concrete porch, that's where there was a one-car attached garage before the addition was done, and that's where it would be replaced. But the brick garage...
So you are actually putting...
Yes.
Okay. So actually, so I understand you're going to drive into the driveway and right into the... Okay, so you're not changing anything. You're going to drive right into the driveway. It's not going to be right into the garage, excuse me. Okay.
Straight, straight shot into a...
So then where is the bathroom? If I'm looking at this diagram that you keep kind of referring to, is it right behind? Where is the bathroom?
The bathroom is directly behind. If you take a look at the concrete walk, and it comes to a concrete porch, and then you see the... It's the back of that area, the back of the house.
Got it.
So it's right behind there.
It's behind there, okay.
So you have a family room that used to be a garage, and you have the bathroom directly behind it. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, going back to Trustee Kennedy's comment, you can see that the width of the house there is 26.99 feet. Even if you could imagine some sort of a tandem configuration, you wouldn't be allowed to put two cars there because I believe a parking space has to be at least 18 feet and most, as we know, are 20 to 22 feet. So you'd have to put a large addition on the back in addition to reinforcing the area below the bathroom and et cetera.
So, Mr. Murdock, let me just clarify what you just said. If you just took the bathroom out, you're still not going to have enough room for two cars?
That's correct. That's what I was saying. Yes, sir.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Murdock? I do have a question for Mr. Adler as well.
I don't know if now's the time for me to throw in an extra... This is Rob Garrison. I don't know if now's the time for me to throw in an extra comment.
Let me ask, let me ask Mr. Adler this one question, and then I will go back to you. Is that okay?
Perfect.
John, the reference to the change in the zoning code on the parking spaces, do you know when that was implemented?
First in 1994, and then there were changes in '96 and 2000. But yeah, first in 1994.
So, and Mr. Garrison, I think your testimony was that your family has lived in this house for 40 years?
I think more like 47, but yes.
Okay, and you guys didn't put the garage on? Somebody else put the garage on?
1973 is, I believe, when my father bought the house. And then I purchased it from him in 2002.
But the garage was there when your father bought it?
Correct. It's exactly the same footprint as when my father bought it.
So safely, we can assume that it was built several decades before the zoning code was changed to require the retention of the two spots?
Exactly. And my father had always said to me when I was younger and I grew up, you know, thinking, you know, the idea, this is two lots, and someday we'll do this kind of a plan. And that had always been part of the thinking as I was growing up, as well as when I bought the house.
If there's other things you'd like to add, now I will recognize you for that as well.
Sure, I think most of the comments that I had prepared have already been covered in some other way, and I don't want to waste people's time. I'll throw out a couple of things. The existing house is beautiful. Yeah, I'm sorry that you can't see the inside of it right now because it was built to very elegant standards. I think it was built as one of the fancier houses at the time it was built. Oversized rooms, high ceilings, crown molding, wainscoting, elegant stairway, banister, you know, all kinds of things. It's a neat house. It'd be a real shame to see it torn down. I think that we've certainly been very happy living in there for many decades, and I think other people would be as well. Another issue, which Mike touched upon a little bit, was parking. We all know that parts of Kenilworth Gardens have terrible parking problems. I get that, I see that. This particular subsection of this particular block does not. As an example, I looked at the 14 closest houses to where we're at. So that's going, three houses one direction, three houses the other direction, plus the corresponding houses across the street, as well as the two houses across from us. There's two houses that have one-car garages amidst those 14 or 15 houses. I popped over to Thornwood, which is the street, one street north of us, went to the same location in their block, and counted up of the 14 houses, seven of the houses had a one-car garage. So I only bring that up to differentiate that there is a big difference between certain places on certain blocks. And this block does not particularly have a problem in that area. And it's, you know, it's a balancing of interests. I guess I believe asking to do something reasonable that's very consistent with the neighborhood in general. So I hope that you'll be able to prove it on those merits.
Any further questions for Mr. Adler, Mr. Garrison, or Mr. Murdock?
I have a question for Mr. Adler. The parking regulations, or the regulations that require a two-car garage, that's not unique to Kenilworth Gardens, is it? I think that's the entire village.
Correct, it's the entire village.
So it doesn't really... The parking situation in Kenilworth Gardens or on any particular block isn't really relevant to the fact that we have this requirement because we don't want to encourage a lot of street parking by residents. Is that correct?
Um, I, yes, I think that's correct. I do think, if you're looking at the character of the neighborhood, Kenilworth Gardens is an area where you do have one-car attached garages where you can't actually build a second stall. In other areas where you have alleys, it is much easier to do a two-car garage, regardless of the width of your house and what your setbacks are. But I, you know, the idea of requiring the two-car garage to help get cars off the street is village-wide. You're correct about that.
And a requirement for all new construction.
All new construction.
Although we did, didn't, I can't remember. Mr. Adler, the case, and Trustee Sullivan, you might have been on the zoning board. The case over by Laurel, where they were building the new construction on sort of that third of the lot? I think they did put two cars in. I think I actually was the lone, the sole vote against it because I thought they should have only had one car, and they should have asked for that variance just given the small size of the lot. Is that, am I thinking of that right?
And we did have two homes, I think, very small lots, where additions actually went beyond the percentage that we allow, and it was considered a new home. And these lots were so small, they were cut off typically from the rear of a home that faced the main street, and this was facing the side street and an alley. And in both those cases, we did allow, even though it was classified as a new home, the foundations were being saved. We did allow, in those cases, the one-car garage because frankly, they didn't have the... There was absolutely no place to put a second car space in those instances.
And if I recall, on the house on Laurel, which was just a very unusual lot. That was just a complicated lot. But I also think, I don't think there was street parking right outside the house, if I recall that. So there wasn't really a good, on that part of Laurel, there was some, they would have had it parked if they had a second car, they would have had it parked further away. Whereas on this street, they can park right in front of the house, but on the street.
Had I considered that, I might have voted for it.
Asking for the smaller garage. But I think that was staff's recommendation, the smaller garage.
I've been meaning to argue that case with you for the last eight years.
It's a gorgeous house now, though. I will say, it's a gorgeous house, that house. Okay, any other questions?
On the parking, though, on this street? Because I have talked to, and I know, you know, with Greenwood and Kenilworth Gardens and some of these, especially Elmwood and Greenwood, they serve, they could serve as cut-through streets, or they do serve as cut-through streets for people. And one of the advantages of having the cars on the streets, if I understand it, is it forces people to slow down, you know? And I know they've explored speed bumps, which that doesn't work, or parking on one side. But, you know, in this case, I mean, having cars on the street is a little bit of a safety. It's, I think it helps safety, but...
I don't know, I don't know, I don't, I don't know. I don't think Ms. Berger's on the phone to opine on that, but...
I want to say... This is Trustee Kennedy. Living on a street similar to Greenwood, it does slow down traffic, but it makes for difficult sidelines. So you can't see children go, you know, as easily. You can't see people backing out of driveways as easily. When you yourself are backing out and there are lots of parked cars, you can't see traffic coming unless you have a very tall car. It has its pros and cons. But I don't think that, on balance, I would not say that it's safe.
I guess I would also add, as another Kenilworth Gardens resident on this board, that cars on the street tend to impede traffic, as Trustee Sullivan suggests. But they do because if two cars are parked one across from another, or a landscaping truck, or a package delivery truck, or garbage truck, the street can become impassable. So that certainly, parking on the street can create additional problems, even though, yes, it does slow people down sometimes. I know in the case of Greenwood, Greenwood is a street that the Transportation Commission is actually going to be studying sometime, I think in the next some number of months, because it has been identified as a street where people use it for cutting through and for driving too fast. So placing additional cars on the street, which is something I'll speak to when we have our comments here, is very much of a two-edged sword. It helps, but it also creates a lot of problems.
I'm not sure, I mean, look, I live in, I live in one of those one-car garage houses with a driveway, and we can fit three cars in our garage. I don't know, this one didn't seem, or I'm sorry, in our driveway. In our drive, yeah, no, not three cars.
What kind of car do you drive?
We had to widen the garage, we had to widen the garage to even get one car in. But, you know, I think this, in my view of it, I think you could fit two cars on the driveway here so that...
Yeah.
It's more, as I understand it, and Mr. Adler, tune back in, part of the two-car garage requirement, enclosed two-car garage requirement, is aesthetic, not safety. It's like, we just don't want to look at cars in the front lots of homes. It's not as much safety. We just don't, that's a public policy. Get them off the street, get them off the driveways, put them in garages. So it's not necessarily safety-driven as much as it's aesthetic-driven.
Correct. And I, as we all know, there's some people that have three-car garages and they don't park a car in their garage. You know, there is no requirement that the garage is actually housing a vehicle. And, you know, we talked about that when we changed the ordinance. It used to be much more restrictive. When you did an addition over a certain size, you had to add a one-car, you know, if you had a one-car garage or no garage, you had to get it up to two cars. And we did change it really to deal with new construction and not the existing homes. Now, it doesn't allow you to reduce, like, that's why this is a variation. But, yeah, it really was intended, the idea was to get the cars out of sight so people aren't stacking cars on their driveway and also to get them off the street.
And if I could just jump in to clarify, some single-car garage houses in Kenilworth Gardens only have a driveway long enough to hold one other car on that driveway. This house will have a driveway long enough to hold two other cars off the street. So it will be possible, it may not always be convenient, but it will be possible to have two or even three cars off the street with the proposed change. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Trustee plunket.
Okay, this is again for Mr. Adler. And this question might be backwards. But let's assume that this house, this lot is subdivided. And now, on one lot, you have a house with no garage, and on the other lot, you have a house with two garages. Can this be subdivided without us making a decision? Is that, it's going to be divided by right, correct?
If this is, if it's subdivided, and then the intention is to build on the house next door, sorry, the lot next door, the existing house would have to be removed. So to leave the existing house, you would have to grant this relief. If you don't grant the relief, then the subdivision is going to be conditioned upon the existing house being removed because it will be non-conforming after the subdivision is recorded. And, you know, I believe that's one reason why Mr. Garrison didn't get the final approval because I think he was still looking to see if somebody was going to buy the property and save the home. And that, because of that, the timeline ran out and that's why they're back looking to go to the Plan Commission and now requesting this variation or these variations.
So in some respects, the decision is a judgment call over two enclosed parking spaces or preserving the house? I mean, like, that's, that's sort of what you're weighing. What's, from a policy point of view, would you rather preserve two parking, enclosed parking spaces on these, on these lots? Because you will, or would you rather preserve the existing home? You can't have both. You can't, if this gets subdivided, which economically it will, and as Mr. Stein sort of talked around, there's very little we can do to prevent that. You could get your four, you could get your four parking spaces enclosed, but you will lose this house as a result. Is that a fair statement, Mr. Adler, just in terms of what the choice is?
Yeah, I mean, there is a chance that a buyer is bound for the house as it exists, I guess. But, you know, usually we see when there's a lot like this, that there is a desire to build new homes on them. I mean, that's typically what we see.
And I think Mr. Murdock alluded to it, but a buyer could also tear this house down and build the biggest house in Kenilworth Gardens on this lot.
Yes, there, yeah, there's nothing stopping.
Which sort of harkens back, I don't know if other trustees have had this experience, but there's a very large house that was built on Lake not that long ago by right. And I've had numerous people ask me, why in the world did the village let someone build a house that big? And I said, they had big enough property, they can build a big house. So, I mean, that's another arguably potential risk here is that we save two parking spaces and end up with a house that when any time anybody walks by it, they go, how did this get built here? I can't believe the village let this get built here, you know?
You're talking about the bank? Just kidding.
Is that what you refer to it? Because it's very close to your house, Kathy.
Yeah.
Mr. Adler?
Yes?
Can you help me understand what the benefit comparison would be between the lost permeable space of having two properties with garages potentially in the back versus what sort of stormwater requirements might be, you know, benefits would be afforded by new construction?
Sure. You know, I think the, I guess the most obvious thing would be a driveway that's going to be most likely, unless it's an attached garage up front. And sometimes that's difficult on 50-foot wide lots, especially, you know, if you're trying to get a real good usable two-car garage. So if we're assuming it's a detached garage, you're going to be looking at, you know, the additional coverage that you're allowed for the garage, which, you know, you're talking, in this case, probably 220 more square feet than the existing home. And then the driveway getting back there. I did run the numbers and Mr. Murdock's number of approximately 3,400 did include the garage. So what you would have is a house that was, if they're saying that the existing house was 2,700 square feet with the garage, you'd be having a house with another 700 square feet. Now, that all wouldn't be lot coverage. It'd probably be two stories, but you might be talking about another 200 to 300 square feet there. So my guess is you're probably talking, structure-wise, 400 to 500 square feet more and lot coverage and then whatever driveway you'd need to access it.
New homes, any sort of retention?
Um, yeah, I mean, it's what engineering's going to require on the retention, given, you know, what they see in that area. And with the subdivision, you know, they, and a new house being built on the eastern lot, obviously, they're going to look at that property and, and, you know, how it works with the, I guess, the house, the lot to the west. But I'm not, I'm not positive how that differs from if you left the, if your question was if they left the house, what would they have to do different drainage, grading-wise? I'm not positive then compared to a new home. Again, it's going to be less coverage. But yes, a new home is going to be required to do more substantial work in nature, in that regard.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Other questions for the applicant or for the staff?
Do we know when this house was originally built?
1936. Yeah. Oh, sorry. You said 36?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then it appears the addition was done in approximately 58, from what I could tell, about 20 years later.
Well, Kenilworth Gardens wasn't fully developed in 36, was it?
It was one of the first houses. I've seen pictures of Kenilworth Gardens with almost no houses in it, but this one was there.
Yeah, the historical, the historical museum has one that, and it hangs in the corner bakery where there's that shot of, of the convent and it looks like farmland still, a lot of it to the north. All right, any more questions? We're going to go, we'll do public comment quickly in case anybody's on the line. And then we'll ask the applicant if they've got any final words and then we'll roll into discussion. So this is the worst part of these remote meetings, all of the talking I have to do to get to public comment instead of just raise your hands. Okay, so I can't ask people to raise their hands, we're doing this remotely. If anybody is on YouTube Live and would like to submit a comment, the chat window is to the right of the video window. And if anyone is on the phone who would like to make a comment at this time, please unmute yourself, identify yourself, and I will create a list for public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to be heard on this matter? Okay, hearing none, I will now ask, did anybody submit any comments via the chat window on YouTube Live?
No comments, President Plinsky.
Okay, thank you. So any final comments from the applicant before we move into discussion here?
Yeah, I think I would just, I would just make two points. One, again, you've had multiple neighbors who have written in favor of the application. There hasn't been a single neighbor or nearby resident who's opposed to the application. And I think the second thing that I said at the start, but I think it's worth emphasizing, if I wanted to build this house today as it's configured, again, assuming these are two separate lots, which we've established that pretty much by right has already been granted but not finalized and will be granted again, I would need to obtain a special use in order to put my required parking on a separate lot. That's because that's out of the ordinary, it's unusual, it's generally not supported by public policy and what's in the best interest of the village. So it's generally not done and people have to meet a number of standards to approve it. I simply want to take this house back to the way it was designed, the way it was built. And as Rob had said, it's a beautiful house that I want to preserve and I'm hoping that the village will allow me to preserve the house. I guess I would say one last thing because there was a comment about, by one of the zoning board members about a developer versus a homeowner. I am putting my house up for sale sometime in the next couple of weeks and I would love to live in this house. It's a beautiful house and I've lived in Kenilworth Gardens, two houses before. I love the neighborhood and I'm hoping that this will be my house someday. So thank you.
My comment would be, no plan is perfect. You know, we're trying to balance interests here. And, but this is a good plan and I think this is a good, the best plan overall for the neighborhood. And I really believe that. Not only is it what I want to see done, but I really think that, what'll this neighborhood look like in two years? I think this is a good plan.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move into discussion. I'm actually going to go first because I've got some thoughts that I'd like people to think about here. So first off, let's step back and think about what zoning codes are for. So our zoning code exists to protect neighboring property owners and to protect the neighborhood, okay? And so when, when we think about this decision, what is our desired public policy outcome? And does strict application of the zoning code achieve that outcome? That's what the variance process is. It's deciding whether strict application of the zoning code is appropriate or not. So we've got three choices here. We've got two new houses with two-car garages, long driveways, you know, increasing impervious surface and you can be guaranteed that developer is going to max out the size of these houses. That's what developers do. They build as much as we allow them to build. You could have one large house, take advantage of the configuration here and create the biggest house on the block and potentially the biggest house in Kenilworth Gardens. Or you could renovate an existing home and build one new house. So that's, in my mind, I just, I sort of break this down to, is it more important to preserve the existing home or is it more important to preserve two enclosed spots? And, look, opinions may differ on this, but I think you can find the hardship given the location of the garage on the separate lot. I mean, that's unusual. And again, we, those are the kind of things we grant variances for all the time. The house was cited before there was a zoning code. There wasn't a zoning code back when these decisions were made. Further, if you have any concerns about teardowns, at all, any concerns, this is actually an opportunity to influence an outcome that results in one less teardown. I mean, we do this all the time for older homes, we make accommodations and this is a very nice home. Nobody's going to suggest that it's an architectural gem. You know, it's not a home that was built in, you know, 1905 by a famous architect or something. But, look, a number of us live in Kenilworth Gardens. This is what homes in Kenilworth Gardens look like. This is what our neighborhood looks like. So, you know, economic considerations are not sufficient to grant a variance. That's clear in the code, that's clear in the way the board has interpreted the code. But the existates of economic considerations doesn't require us to reject every variance either. Almost every variance, there's an economic consideration, you know. I don't want to, I've got an existing air conditioner on the side of my house. I don't want to rerun, it's not reasonable to ask me to rerun all of my pipes to put the new air conditioner in the conforming spot. So we allow people to put it in, in the old spot. So just go back to the public purpose, you know, protecting neighborhoods. And is strict application of the code, does that advance the public policy? Or make it even simpler, in your judgment, what's best for the neighborhood? If you lived across the street, if you lived next door, what would you want the answer to be? The path through hardship exists. And at the end of the day, we have the ability to influence the public policy outcome. So I would ask you to think about it that way, that, as if you lived across the street. If you were a person who lived in the neighborhood, like me and Trustee Barrow and Trustee Kennedy and Trustee Plunkett used to and Trustee Sullivan used to, what would you want the outcome to be? All right, I'll turn it over to others who'd like to speak.
Well, this is Trustee Kennedy. I guess I see it a little different. I would like to see the property preserved. And it, what, the thing that troubles me is I, I'm not convinced that those are the only options. I'm not convinced that building two new houses or one large house are the only options. It seems that there is a difficulty in the architectural design of a two-car garage here, but it's not impossible. And without more information like, like a floor plan so that I can really visualize what it would mean to move a bathroom, which I think is all we're talking about, I, I don't see how it's impossible to put a two-car garage and maintain the existing house. I just wish that we had more than just, it would be difficult, I would rather not do it. It might be more expensive than a one-car garage. I would like to know that there's more obstacle to it than that.
But I, but Trustee Kennedy, let me, let me play devil's advocate with you for a second. I think the answer is they have better options than doing that, which is building one big house or tearing it down and building two houses. You know, those are other options that are available to them without our approval.
I understand. But I guess, it's hard for me to, I feel like we're being told we have to do this because there are two options we really don't like. But there's a third option that might work, but they're not willing to explore that. And that troubles me because we do have an ordinance that says that for the benefit of the community, we should have two-car garages. We should encourage people to get their cars off their street and presumably off the driveway as well. And we're going to change that because we're told it's too much trouble to put a two-car garage here. And I, I don't find that a very satisfying conclusion.
Okay, others?
I will, I'll speak and I, I've come to the conclusion that the variation standards are substantially met here. There is a hardship. And when I balance the importance of two-car garages, and I do think they are important, I think that that's a, it's not, it's, it's a very intentional part of our zoning code. But I balance that against what can be done here to preserve a home which is consistent with the neighborhood and not one where I would anticipate that there would be potentially three or four cars. It's not that large a home where I would expect there would be multiple teenagers with multiple cars. And as we've learned, two cars can be parked on the driveway. I think that in preserving this home and minimizing the amount of impervious surface, minimizing the disruption to the neighborhood are all reasons to support this. And I believe that I can.
Someone else?
Oh, I'll chime in.
Trustee Plunkett.
Sure. So I think, I see three goals here. And number one is preserving the character of the neighborhood. And I think that keeping this house fulfills our policy goal of preserving the character of the neighborhood. It's a house, as Mr. Garrison said, was built in 1936. And I can understand his wish to preserve the house, even as he would admit I'm doing similar things to my parents' house that I feel very attached to. But I think that the letters from the neighbors in Kenilworth Gardens also attest to that, that they would like to see this house remain. I think that keeping this house minimizes the impervious surface. We talk about that all the time. And there's substantial more impervious surface that will occur with two new construction homes. And certainly, the east lot, you know, there will be a new construction home and it will be, you know, it will have the detached garage. I think the third thing, too, that this, you know, has the continuity of providing housing at multiple price points. You know, a house with a one-car garage on a smaller footprint is certainly a less expensive home than a brand-new construction home. And I think that it helps to attract residents of, you know, a broader range of economic circumstances, either moving into the Womet or, you know, transferring to a different home in Womet. I think these outweigh, in this case, two garage spaces. We're certainly not setting any precedent here. I can't imagine a case like this ever coming before us again. And I, you know, I must admit, when I first heard about this, I thought, wow, this is odd. But once you pick it apart and you think about, you know, what you could do here, what the goal is, you know, I think it's, it's worth it. So those are my thoughts on that.
I agree with Trustee, how Trustee Plunkett said it, I think, you know, we are talking, I think this has got to set a record for the smallest variation we've ever seen. And what is it, a quarter, less than a quarter of an inch, which I think is impressive. I don't even know how to say 0.02 square foot, but, you know, I think the beauty of Greenwood and having driven by this house for 12 years just down there, because I live just east of it, I love this, I miss that part of Greenwood, I miss that street because there are, all the houses are different. And it's a, it's probably one of the best blocks, I think, in the village, given, you know, who lives on that. And I would hate to see two new 3,500-square-foot homes, which could still be, very well be a possibility. And who knows, you know, what, you know, this current transaction happens or somebody else could come in and say, you know what? I'm going to, I got the means, I'm going to tear it down and really buy it. But I think preserving this house and given how minimal this request is, I could support this. And plus knowing, obviously, we're working with two individuals who have had a long, long history in. two individuals who have had a long, long history in, in Womet and, and do have an appreciation for what we're trying to continue to preserve here. I, I, I could support that they're, they have the best intentions here for the neighborhood. So for me, I could support this.
Trustee Dodd, Trustee Kersman?
Trustee Kersman, do you have anything you want to say or? I was kind of...
No, thank you.
So I was interested actually in what the other trustees were going to say. I agree with what, you know, I agree with actually everybody's perspective. And Trustee Kennedy, I hear you around, you know, it would be nice to understand and see a plan where we understood exactly why there isn't a way to fit a two-car garage or for that matter, to find a way to do a driveway to get back to the back of the house. But I think the reality is that's work in time and we don't have to, we don't have to require them to do that. And so if we don't support this, it's likely that, you know, this may or may not go, this won't, won't go through. And then our two options will be in front of us. So I do believe that preserving the house is important. And, you know, we, and if we don't, and if we, I am concerned as somebody who lives in a, you know, as somebody who lives in an area where there is lots of teardowns, I think it is something that I continue to be concerned about because the character of these, of the homes within our community are, is the differences in the types of homes that we have and the differences in the way they look and things like that. And, you know, I hear a lot about now of all the homes being built here look like farmhouses or whatever. And so that is something to be, to be cognizant of. So for those reasons, I, and all the reasons that other, all the other trustees stated in terms of preserving the home, neighborhood support, limiting, you know, reducing impervious surface, I can support this.
Any, any additional comments that any of the trustees would like to make?
If I could just make a couple of, of comments. I, it, it seems to me that what we're talking about is not the quarter of an inch. Am I correct? We're really just talking about whether or not you can buy, you can require, whether we should insist on a two-car garage. Not, not the quarter of an inch variation, but the two-car garage variation. Am I wrong?
No, that's right. I think that's been the substance of the comments, yeah.
Okay, all right. So I got, I got confused for a minute. Please, somebody else's comment. And as to the price point, there's, this is not, if you turn this into a one-car garage, you're still going to have a house that's worth about $750,000 to $800,000. With this, we're not exactly going to be producing affordable housing by creating a house with a one-car garage in Kennelworth Gardens.
No, but, but I think, and I, I had asked Mr. Adler about this, you know, and Mr. Murdoch is a developer. A maxed-out house is going to be a million, two, million, three.
Right.
So.
No, no, I understand that, but, but this is not...
It's not affordable, it's not, it's not quote affordable housing. But still, there are people who for, who a $750,000 home is approachable, but a million-three home isn't.
But it's probably not, it's probably even above the median price in Womet. So it's, it's not, I, I don't, I don't think that we, in fact, I'm sure that it's above the median price of a home in Womet. So it, it's not, that doesn't strike me as a particularly relevant consideration. And, and I, I recognize as, as Trustee Dodd said, we can't make them go back and look at a way to put a two-car garage on here. We can't do that. I just am deeply, deeply sorry that they're not willing to do it. Because I think that's what would really serve the best interests of the community and the neighbors and preserving the home and satisfying the two-car garage requirement, which is, in my view, really important. So I, I, I would hope that, that we could encourage them to do that, to take a little more time and look at what's possible. But if we, if we can't do that, I, I just, I just think that's a shame.
And I just want to, sorry.
Go ahead. I was, I was just going to ask, any further comments?
I mean, I, I hear you, Trustee Kennedy, and I don't want to, but, you know, I think we also have to respect the opinions of these applicants and trust the, you know, that they've looked at this and have, you know, and we can, you know. And so, and that, you know, they feel like, you know, for all the reasons that they stated, that that would be very difficult to do and things like that. And, and so I think that's important as, as we as trustees, that we do, you know, to some degree, trust when people are speaking in front of us and that they've done their due diligence to, they've understood the feedback from the, from the zoning board or whatever, that they've done their due diligence and, you know, I, you know, Rob and Mike are both, you know, people that have been involved in the community and I do trust their opinions, I guess, and what they've stated.
It's just that the statute itself requires that, that we look at whether they can do it, not whether it's more profitable to do it a different way.
And no, and it's, it's clear, it's clear that profits are not sufficient. But profits are not a problem.
No, I know that.
You don't have to deny everything that there's a profit motive for. So I don't think anybody's basing their decision on that.
Right.
I, I understand that. I completely understand that. But we have at other times told people they can't do things. They, they have argued to us that they have to do it this way because it's all they can afford. And in many of the cases that I've seen over the years, that has not been considered sufficient to justify variation. But that is essentially, I think...
But that's, no, that's not the circumstance here. The circumstance here is that instead they're going to go a different path that's more profitable to them. They're not going to take our less profitable path. They're going to take the more profitable path that's permitted by law, where we won't have a say in it. And our, our opportunity here to influence this, to, to nudge them is by granting this, we'll save this house. It is that simple, I think. If we grant this, we save a house. If we don't, we probably don't save a house. So.
And, and I agree with that statement, Trustee Kennedy. So I, I don't look at it just, I, I didn't want to give you the impression that I, you know, am looking at that this being proffered for them or whatever. That's not, that's not at all where I'm coming from or...
Oh, I knew that. No, I knew.
Want to make sure, you know. To me, preserving this house is, you know, is important because it does look similar to the rest of the homes in the, in the area. And I, I think the other two option, the other two options, you know, will, I won't like them as much, I guess.
They're less optimal.
I'm sorry, that's the best way for me to...
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna shut down debate. I will remind everyone that this item comes to us with a negative recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals. So it does need five votes tonight to overturn the recommendation of the zoning board. An affirmative vote is a vote to overturn the Zoning Board of Appeals recommendation. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Barrow?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
No.
Trustee Kennedy?
No.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
President Polinski?
Aye. So the motion carries, the Zoning Board of Appeals recommendation has been overturned. Mr. Murdoch and Mr. Garrison, at the next board meeting, the actual ordinance will be approved on the consent agenda. So you will, should show up, but hopefully it'll be a short night for you, much shorter than tonight.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So back to Trustee Barrow. We're not done yet, guys.
Thank you, President Polinski. We have item 611. And I hereby move...
Item, item 612.
612, I hereby, it's getting late. I hereby move approval for Zoning Board of Appeals, case number 2020-Z-2733 Canterbury Court regarding a request for a 2.0-foot fence height variation to permit the construction of a 6.0-foot-tall, open replacement fence in a front yard in accordance with the plans submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Trustee Dodd, second. All right, this item also comes to us with a negative recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals. So it will need five votes tonight to overturn the recommendation of the zoning board. I would again call on Mr. Adler to join us. And you need help again for Mr. Brayman on the...
Let's, let's see. Last time my computer crashed when I tried getting PowerPoint up before, but fingers crossed.
There we go.
Okay, now will I be able to? Ah, there we go. Hey. Second, second time's the charm. This is pretty, this, this request is pretty straightforward. It's a two-foot fence height variation. It is not a openness variation and it's in the front yard at 33 Canterbury Court, which is along Sheridan Road. In this case, the house does face Canterbury Court, but zoning-wise, the yard, the lot line joining Sheridan is considered the required front yard. In this case, if the variation is approved, the applicant can build proposed fence. If no, the applicant could leave the existing fence or they could build a conforming four-foot-high, 50% open fence. In this case, in addition to the variation standards, there are a number of additional standards that are specific to fence variations. Here are the fence variation standards. Again, as President Polinski mentioned, this was a split vote. The majority for members of the Zoning Board of Appeals voted to deny the request. And two members voted to approve the request. Like the previous case, there's a fairly detailed findings for this case. What you see here is where the proposed fence is located. You probably noticed that there is a newer portion of stockade fence, which in this case runs along the rear, sorry, the, the south 53.74 feet that you see on that survey. That's actually in Evanston where they do permit closed higher fences along Sheridan Road. This shows the property in its entirety. Proposed fence type.
John, could you go back to the slide with the property as a whole?
Yep.
All right, okay. So on the left is that little, like, log cabin?
Yes, yep. Yep, and then you, you could see the line that's drawn and, and how the, how the lot has a notch out of it. It's that southern portion that's, that's in Evanston.
Got it, okay.
Just showing the context with the aerial. And then farther out, but using the building outline aerial that, that we were able to do in 2019. And that concludes what I have on 33 Canterbury.
Question for you, John, Mr. Adler. The, the fence was in somewhat disrepair. It looked like some of it had been damaged and, and the zoning board case mentioned that as well. Can the applicant repair that? And without approval or because it's a closed fence, which is no longer allowed, are they even allowed to repair the fence?
You are not allowed to repair the structural members of the fence. So the, the posts that hold up the actual pickets, you are not allowed to repair those. If those get damaged, you would have to come in and seek a variation to repair those.
But if it's just the, if it's just the picket, they could replace the picket? I, I wasn't looking closely enough to...
Right, there, there is the ability to just replace some pickets. I, I believe, and I would have to look, I, I believe that the zoning ordinance might address that now. It didn't used to. But historically, if, you know, there's on a fence, you know, 10% of the pickets need to be replaced, we really haven't gotten involved. It's really when those structural members, you know, start, start failing that we would require a variation if it's a non-conforming fence to, to reinstall those.
Right, okay. So you don't have a, a lot of places in the zoning code if you're replacing something or if you're repairing something, the rules are different. But in this case, because it's a enclosed fence and, and not in an area that's not specifically designated for an enclosed fence, if they were to need to do, doesn't even sound like that major of repairs. If we're just talking about replacing a post, they would have to come for a variance and potentially remove, well, remove the fence or is it like they can just leave it as it is? They don't...
Depending on the condition of the fence, they may be able to leave it. Also, there's, you know, and this, this has happened on occasion where the fence was between property owners. You could remove a section of a fence and leave the other portion that's non-conforming. People will typically not do that just because of it doesn't serve the function typically when somebody does that and then appearance-wise. But, you know, we, we would have to look to see if we believe the fence is in disrepair and either needs to be removed or needs to be repaired to a certain extent.
Okay. I don't know if those questions were on trustees' minds, but that was sort of, that sort of sets the path for what the alternatives are for the, for the homeowner, right? Other question for Mr. Adler while he's on the screen from the, from the trustees? Okay, so welcome. I see the applicant is on the screen now. Members of the Village Board have reviewed the report. So they are familiar with the, it's not a project, it's, it's a, it's a fence. You could certainly talk about the fence, but that's pretty straightforward. If you would focus your comments on the concerns raised by the zoning board. And just to paraphrase, I think, I think the sentence from the majority report, "There's no hardship preventing the owner from making reasonable use of the property." "The, there's existing landscaping in combination with a conforming fence and any other additional landscaping would provide all the screening and security the applicant is seeking." So the zoning board was, was unconvinced, unmoved with regards to hardship. So I'd ask you to focus your remarks on why this board should, should, should see your hardship the way you're viewing it.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. My name is David Crown. Thanks for the opportunity to, to speak to you tonight. And the, the case is documented very completely and thoroughly. I'll just give my perspective on things. My family's lived on Canterbury Court since 1954. There's been a six-foot solid fence there for more than 60 years. It's been important to protect the, what is functionally a side yard of the property from the busyness of Sheridan Road, vehicular, bicycle, pedestrian traffic. And that's been of value to us. The other aspect of the property that's unique in some respects is that it slopes down pretty steeply from Sheridan Road. So the lines of sight are kind of down into the yard and, and toward the house. The, the history of this is that in 1998, my mother wanted to replace the old fence with a like fence and went through the process with the village. And what was approved was not the openness variation, but the height variation. And part of the fence was damaged in the storm this summer. My sisters and I now own the property. And my goal is to get a fence back up quickly, which I've failed to do. And also to comply with the previous findings from the village. So found a fence that is six-foot high that was not the 80% requirement that they put on my mom in 1998 and was going to make up for what we lose in, in privacy with some additional vegetation. In the years since we put the first request in, we have planted shrubs and they do part of the job. But Sheridan Road is increasingly busy. And given the way we've used that part of the property, it's important for us to have as much privacy and a screen from the road as possible. So I'm happy to answer any questions. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
There, there are a number of properties on Sheridan Road, um, and, you know, and as most, I suspect all the trustees did, you know, I drove Sheridan Road, uh, from the Evanston border, frankly, all the way up to, um, you know, Plaza Lago. And there are, the only place where there are any, um, enclosed fences of that height are all the way up by Westerfield, where you have some townhomes, uh, that were developed, and literally those are their, that's their entire yard. But everywhere else, uh, there were either four-foot fences, um, oftentimes four-foot fences with arborvitae or other, uh, landscaping to, uh, provide additional screening and privacy, but, um, but I didn't even see, um, any, any six-foot open fences on Sheridan Road. And the only, the only place where the village, uh, has approved six-foot fences, uh, are, you know, either some limited portion, um, and this is by the Bahai, which is on Sheridan Road, as you know, and, and the gate in, at a recent property, um, which is across from the, you know, the largest tourist attraction in suburban, uh, Chicago. And then, um, there are a handful of properties, uh, three, I think, that are right next to the Womack Water Plant, which also has very high fences for security purpose. And those properties have a legitimate concern of, of people cutting through their yards to the beach. Surprisingly large number of police reports on that, and you would think people would respect people's yards, but they don't. And so, um, in those cases, but those are, I mean, we're, we're, we're pretty particular on fences, and those are the only ones that, um, I'm sort of aware of that are comparable, and they all have, uh, uh, I would argue a better reason, um, given their proximity to either the beach, the water plant, or the Bahai than yours. So I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with, with the hardship element here, that, that two extra feet of fence is gonna, is, is gonna make a difference. And in particular, you know, the way your property is, is oriented, the, the fence doesn't surround the entire property. So from the point of view of security, if someone jumping the fence, well, they don't have to jump the fence, they just go to the street and walk around the fence. So it, it's one thing if this was a closed fence, but it's not a closed fence, it's an open fence, so I'm not sure the two feet, I, I just don't understand how the two feet really makes that big of a difference for you.
Well, I guess two points. One is that I was trying to be, um, consistent with that, the previous hearing, and just ask for what had already been approved. Um, the second is, is that I think that, um, any buffer of the noise of the road is helpful, and so the higher the fence, um, you know, the idea is to grow vines on the fence, which I think would be attractive, and that will also help, um, buffer the noise from Sheridan Road. Uh, and the six-foot then is consistent with the height of the portion of the fence in Evanston. Can I ask you a question? Um, the, the other properties you're referring to, are they, um, front yard fences?
They are front yard fences, yes.
Is there, is there, I know, I understand from the, the dimensions of the property that the Sheridan Road portion is considered a front yard, but it, it, it's not functionally, um, the front yard of the property at all?
Well, uh, Mr. Adler, you would refer to it, if, if, if you were to take the front yard as Canterbury, you would refer this, refer to this as a side yard adjoining a street, right?
Correct.
And what, are the regulations different on a side yard adjoining a street?
For fences, they're, they're the same, correct.
Okay. So even if we were to consider your, um, the, the, what is by zoning code definition the front yard, if we were to consider it the side yard, you would still be subject to the same, uh, same constraints on height?
You would. Um, uh, the side yard adjoining a street would actually be, uh, a smaller yard if, um, one was looking to set the fence onto the property to, to get the height. Uh, the front yard in this case actually is where the house is currently. It's the only home on this block that's in Womack. And a side, side yard adjoining a street would be a 30-foot yard there. So the, the only difference would be if, if the fence was going to be set back onto the lot where you might be able to put it.
So what you're saying, let me make sure I understand it. If it were considered a side yard, how far back would he have to set it back to have a taller fence?
30 feet.
Okay, which is probably not what you're thinking, setting, and I don't think you could with the topography, set the, set it back 30 feet.
Right. I, I was raising the, the point in terms of the comparisons to the other properties, whether they were, you know, strict comparisons based upon front yard versus side yard. I understand the regulation.
Yeah, there, yeah, I, I think there's, I think actually more latitude was, was granted to them for the front yard because of the location. And the only one on Sheridan, it was really just the gate, to make the gate a little more imposing, uh, so people were less likely to, to try to open it, I believe, was the argument.
President Balinski, can I, um, chime in for just a moment?
Of course.
I just want to, I, I understand, I think I understand the direction that the, um, applicant is going. And yes, there are other homes on Sheridan Road similar to yours, where we, the side yard fences, um, with the arborvitae are four feet. So I, there's not as many, but there are a number, I drove the same street, there are a number, in fact, there's one right across the, very close to across the street from you. So it's, there are other properties similar to yours, not maybe in terms of size, but to, to President Balinski's point.
And there's, actually, there's one very close to your house, like, share, where Sheridan and Fifth come together, where it's like a, sort of the odd corner lot, where they've got the landscaping on both sides there.
There's also one on the corner, very close to his house, like kitty corner from his house, where there's a four-foot fence with the arborvitae, same, similar.
Other questions from the board members? Okay, um, I'm gonna open it up to public comment, in case there is anyone here still present. Again, if this was in person, I'd ask for a show of hands. Uh, we're doing this remotely, though, so if anybody is currently watching on YouTube Live, uh, please enter your comments in the chat window to the right of the video window. And if there's anybody who's, and I actually don't, I'm looking at the attendees, and it looks like there is no one else still in the meeting besides, uh, staff, trustees, and, uh, Mr. Crown. Um, but if there are any individuals that I've missed that would like to address the board on this application, I'd ask them to identify themselves now, and I'll create a list. Okay, uh, Mr. Skiles, did anybody submit any, uh, excuse me, comments via YouTube Live?
No comments, Mr. President.
Okay. All right, so, um, uh, Mr. Crown, if you'd like the final word, uh, you don't have to say anything additionally, but I'll give you the opportunity before we, uh, move into discussion.
Uh, I don't have any more to add. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Uh, board members, I'm happy to lead off again if you'd like, but if someone else would like to speak, happy to defer as well. All right, um, I'll, I'll start. Look, I, there, there's, all of the approvals that we've made for higher fences, um, have had some really good reasons. And I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I just don't see a really good reason here. I think you can basically accomplish what you need to accomplish with the shorter fence. And, you know, so I, I, I'm struggling to find the hardship on this one as well, that, that, um, the variation, um, is, is necessary. I'll, I'll, I'll give you the other side of that argument, which is, what's two feet? But again, you know, um, I do like to have, you know, justification, you know, something, and we debate these things, uh, quite extensively, as the prior case, uh, illustrates, uh, we debate these things quite extensively when it comes to, you know, does this make sense to grant a variation? And I'm just not finding it here on this one.
Yeah, I, I actually agree. I think you could, you could go either way. It is, the hardship, I had a hard time with the hardship argument, um, but on the flipside, you know, it is two feet, it is on a busy street, busy sidewalk, um, you know, it is open. Would it have the, the aesthetic negative that I think in some cases we've approved it? But, you know, for me, it was, the hardship was, wasn't there in just granting it because we did 20 years ago, that, I, I, I'm with you, I'm on the fence on this one.
So. No pun intended.